Called session for ten and I'd like to thank the senators who are here this morning. Senator Panglinen, Senator Ogun, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Guthard, Senator Palacios, Senator Tom Ada, two, four, six, seven. Sergeant at arms, please call the senators. They need to have a quorum for us to begin. Morning senators. We do have a quorum, so the legislature is called to order. So we have Senator Panglinen, Senator Barnes, Senator Ogun, Senator Tony Ada, Senators Spohdon, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Guthard, and myself. Very good. Two, four, six, eight, nine. Yes, and like all in one hand. Buenas. Okay. Yesterday, we left off for an amendment and I'd like to recognize Senator Panglinen on your amendment.
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment basically would put into the bill what we already are going to require, but we wanted to ensure that we don't run afoul of not having the certification done and then having to come back and say we have to reimburse the fund because of these certifications. In order to access the money as both testified to and attested by the chairman, I mean the author of the bill and of course Gida and their counsel, that when these bonds are issued and they are earmarked and slated for projects, that the project has to be completed and the bills have to be paid before any excess revenues or any excess proceeds of the bonds can be redirected to other purposes. And so what we really have here is redirecting what we believe to be excess funds after the projects have been completed in order to fund the projects that the author has identified as being critical and crucial to providing service to our students in the manner of transportation required to get them to school. And so this bill would add, amend the last sentence of section four of the bill to add the words, "Upon receipt of the certification by the Director of the Department of Public Works, that the limited obligation highway bond projects have been completed and vendors have been paid." And again, this is a technical amendment that I think will ensure that we are actually accessing the excess funds in a manner prescribed by the bond indentures to assure that we are indeed spending this money appropriately and providing the legal authority to access these excess funds. Thank you very much, Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. On the Panglinen amendment, Senator Ogun, you're recognized.
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker, Buenos dias. If I can ask the mover of the amendment, Madam Speaker, in regards to this particular amendment, I just have one point of clarification or one issue that I need clarified. I know that the language reads, "The Department of Administration shall release this appropriation for mini expenditures and encumbrance of the Department of Public Works upon receipt of certification by the Director of the Department of Public Works that the limited obligation highway bond projects have been completed and vendors have been paid." Now, I guess my question is, more or less, any projects that had already been pre-identified for the use of these funds, were they only under the jurisdiction of DPW or any other government Guam agencies? Because that's really the clarification that I need. Because if it's just isolated to DPW, then the amendment is very appropriate. If it involves other government agencies overseeing the use of this limited obligation funds, then we may need to expand it just slightly.
Senator Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Please, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, and the answer is that the projects were all road paving projects, all under the jurisdiction and authority of the Department of Public Works Director.
Senator Ogun, you still have the floor.
Okay, yes, thank you very much and thank you very much to the good speaker and Madam Speaker for that clarification, because we certainly want to make sure that at least these proceeds are properly certified, that they're available for what the legislation purports to support. Thank you very much, Ms. Massey.
Welcome. Senator Tom Ada on the amendment. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Do you want to close, Senator Panglinen? So there being no objection then to the amendments, so order. I understand that Senator Ada, you do have an amendment.
Madam Speaker, I have two amendments to make.
Do we have a copy of it?
You should have a copy. It is to make an amendment on page two, making an amendment to lines twenty-five and twenty-six.
One moment, I don't see a copy.
Basically, what the amendment is, is...
Sergeant, I'm just gonna get me a copy, please.
Because of the fact that, you know, there's still a little bit of uncertainty as to how much money is actually in there, because I believe that 2.5, 2.2 million that's been identified in the fiscal note was really from the unaudited report. There's still that, you know, slight uncertainty that in fact that is the amount that if in fact that is the amount that is in there. And so I just want to make certain that if in fact there's a lesser amount, that priority is given to the repair of the buses and then so on listed. So I propose that on line twenty-five on page two, it should read, see, an account authorized by Public Law nineteen dash two to the Department of Public Works for the amounts and purposes, and in the order of priority as follows. And then it lists down what the order of priority is, which then would be to refurbish sixty buses, so, and then, you know, the preventive maintenance and so on and so forth. If it turns out that in fact there is not the 2.2 million dollars that's being appropriated, that then, you know, items number seven or number eight will then have to be reduced accordingly, but the school buses should not be affected. So that, Madam Speaker, is the amendment that I have on the bill.
On the amendment, are there any speakers? Are any objections, no objections, so order.
Madam Speaker, I have another amendment here, and when the bill was reported out of committee, it made some changes, adding an additional eight hundred thousand dollars to the appropriation list, on the premise that there was in fact more money than what the original bill was requesting for, the amount of two million dollars. So, accepting the fact that the fiscal note that was attached to the committee report shows that there is in fact only two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, then I'm making the amendment on page three, section two, to change the allocation such that then the allocation for item three on line eight will be reduced from two hundred thousand to a hundred, one hundred thousand. On line twelve, item number five will be reduced from one hundred thousand to fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Line sixteen and line eight respectively will be reduced from four hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. You take up that new total and that will come up to the amount of two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen. That will also then require that we go back to page two and just make that technical amendment on line twenty-three so that it reflects the narrative or the verbiage instead of two million eight, 2.8, oh, two million, eight hundred thousand dollars, it should read two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars to make everything consistent. So that, Madam Speaker, is the amendment that I am making.
On page three, the first amendment is on line eight to reduce the amount from two hundred thousand to one hundred thousand. On line twelve, to reduce one hundred thousand to fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen. On line sixteen and eighteen, to reduce both amounts from four hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. And if you go to page two, on line twenty-three, the amount would change from two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. On that amendment, without any objection or... Senator Ogun, you're recognized on the amendment.
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker, just so that there's additional consistency in conjunction with the appropriate technical adjustment or correction with line twenty-three, that that particular, the figures on page two, line sixteen and thirteen also reflect that same figure, only because we have information that pinpoints at 2.254 million dollars as readily available under this particular council. Madam Speaker, if I can just propose to further amend the amendment to be consistent with the actual figure that is being presented. But I also wanted to, Madam Speaker, you know, I want to thank the good senator for...
One moment, can we, can you repeat that again? On line thirteen, you said, and sixteen?
On page two, line thirteen and sixteen, just be consistent with the number that is being discussed.
Yes, okay. So let's take that amendment. So on that amendment, lines thirteen and sixteen, to change the numbers to reflect two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen, without any objections then, so order.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the amendment that is being proffered, I want to thank the good senator for not reducing the overall amount for line seven and line eights beyond the threshold that is being proposed, because we do know that on behalf of the Guam Fire Department and the Guam Police Department, they had requested in the neighborhood of about four hundred thousand dollars. But the reality is, is that if this is hard cash, which we know it is, it's bond funds, then having two hundred thousand dollars for their emergency requirements, for their equipment, as well as the vehicles and their motorcycles and ambulances, at least, they're gonna have to make decisions to prioritize the expenditure of these funds and to live within these particular means in terms of the allocation. So I want to thank the good senator for not reducing it any further and at least recognizing that there are some urgent situations that need immediate financing and attention that fall in the realm of the Guam Police Department and the Guam Fire Department. So I just wanted to make that general comment. Obviously, I had some serious reservations yesterday when it was discussed about reducing it even further, and I think the good senator was very generous in terms of at least taking into consideration, making sure that some resources are given to these agencies so that they can immediately expend it within the next three to four months. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to the good sponsor of the amendment. Ms. Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogun. On the, on the main motion, are there any other speakers? Okay, so then, Ms. Wait, I'm sorry. Senator Ogun, you spoke on the amendment. Okay, so on that amendment then, that has been amended, are there any objections, no objections, so order. Thank you very much, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I, first of all, would like to thank my colleagues for the input that they've made into the bill to at least remove some of the uncertainties that may have been in there. I think this is certainly is a real positive move insofar as addressing our school bus shortages. And now, after this is done, and we've, you know, we've mitigated, at least rectified some of the immediate problems, then, then we actually would, then the next step would then be to, the next step would be to, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. I just asked, I would move now that the bill be moved down to the voting file. I'd like to ask that, that the co-chairman of the committee, Senator Adolfo Palacios, be added on as the fourth cosponsor there, and Senator Telotidegui be added on after that as another cosponsor. And I'll just move now that the bill be moved down to the voting file.
On the motion then to add two members to the cosponsorship, Palacios as the fourth and Senator Tidegui as the fifth, without any objections, so order. And on the motion then to send bill four seventy-three down to the third reading file then, without any objections, so, thank you. Adi?
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, may I reconsider that motion I made, and I would like to ask that Senator...
Wait, wait, one moment. You want a reconsideration then?
Yes, I would like to add on, I would like to add on...
So wait, wait, to bring the bill back up again, okay?
Only for the purpose of adding on as the fourth, fifth cosponsor after the committee chair...
Okay, but on the motion first to bring it back up, without any objections, so order.
Objection, I would like to ask...
And now your motion then for...
Yes, ma'am, I would like to ask that Senator Ben Panglinen be added on as a cosponsor after Adolfo Palacios, followed by Senator Telotidegui. All right, Senator Telotidegui has requested to take her name off, so please take her name off and replace it with Senator Judy Guthard. And at this time, Madam Speaker, I would like to ask, move then that the bill be moved back to the voting file. Thank you.
Okay, so on the amendment then to add Senator Panglinen and Senator Guthard's on to the cosponsorship, and Senator Tidegui has removed her name and to fall under the regular order, without any objections, so order. And now to place bill four seventy-three in the third reading file, without any objections, so order. We are now on bill four eight eight dash thirty, and I recognize the author, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill four eight eight, on the face of it, seems to be a very, very simple bill. What it does is it changes a word in the existing law from shall to may. As you know, public law...
You want to make a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that bill four eight eight dash thirty be moved to third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
You may proceed then.
Thank you very much. Bill four eight eight dash thirty, COR, is an act that would basically make an amendment to public law, I believe it was public law thirty dash ninety. Public law thirty dash ninety and preceded by public law twenty-nine dash twenty-three actually authorized the Port Authority of Guam to go out and procure a performance management service contract that will actually then provide the management oversight of the container yard operations in addition to providing maintenance services for its cargo handling equipment, and will provide other management services that would provide, that will contribute to the efficiency of the container yard operations down at the port. This performance management contract is essential in view of the fact that very shortly here, the port will be undertaking a hundred million dollars' worth of port modernization construction activities. So you're gonna see a lot of earth being moved, buildings being taken down, buildings being put up, and while all that is going on, it is imperative that the flow of cargo through that port continues to move seamlessly as if nothing else was going on. And in order to do that, you gotta have the necessary management services and systems in place to be able to actually achieve that. Now, the problem that we have is that although the port has actually issued out its request for proposals and has received in, has received the proposals from prospective bidders, the process was, a protest was filed after an award was made. A protest was filed by one of the parties, one of the bidders, that did not receive the award, and now the matter is taken into court. So as a result, now this whole process has been brought to a dead halt. Now, one of the, basically, the matter was taken before the court for two reasons, allegations. One is that the port violated the law, which required that the chief procurement officer shall observe every proceeding that's related, regarding this request for proposal, and the protester alleges that the chief procurement officer was not present at all the, at all the scheduled meetings. And there was another allegation that was put there, that's an improper procedure where the evaluation team was allowed to be given the packets to go and take it with them and review it on their own time, and then to come back later with their score sheets. Now, in that lawsuit that's been filed at the court, the protester is asking for two remedies. One, that the port rescind the award that it has made for this contract and to start all over again. Now, it's very possible that the port may decide to do that. And if it does that, then you go back, we go back to square one, we reissue, and the whole thing starts all over. But even if we did that, we still have a fly in the ointment in that one person, according to the law, the chief procurement officer shall be an observer throughout the RFP process as specified in this section. And in that sense, what we have is a situation where you have one person, who if that person decides, "I'm too busy today," basically, nothing happens. One person could stop the whole process dead in its tracks. And I don't think that that is right, that one person could stop the whole process for a service that is essential to the port, that is part and parcel to this hundred million dollar port modernization activity that's going on. So the proposal, the bill proposes simply to change the requirement of the chief procurement officer to be an observer from being mandatory to discretionary. And we do that by saying that on page two, line thirteen, it reads, "The General Services Agency Chief Procurement Officer may be an observer." That's the only thing that changes. Now, the port is still required to transmit all related documents to the chief procurement officer. The port is still required to extend an invitation and give her the notices of when scheduled meetings are scheduled. It does not change the role of the attorney general. It does not change any of the procurement regulations. All it changes is the requirement for the chief procurement officer to be an observer from one of discretion to that of, from mandatory to discretionary. I have records from the port and the, and their procurement manager down there has kept very detailed records showing that whenever they had meetings, notices were in fact issued to the chief procurement officer and the legal officer that they have assigned down to GSA. So I have, based on the information that I've seen, I have no reason to believe that the, that the port was negligent in its requirement to give, to give due notice, provide the documents. Now, if the chief procurement officer decides that there's some other activity that's more important, then fine, and that was done on one occasion, the chief procurement officer was not available, so she sent the, a buyer to, to be present in her place. There was another time when she was not able to do that, and the port accommodated her with a telephonic participation in the process. But I still, I think that it's not right that one person would have that much power to be able to stop this whole process. Now, earlier in the week, many of my colleagues, I believe, got a copy of this real thick document from, from the attorney that's representing the company that's protesting the bid. And quite frankly, what I did with that document was I put it in this trash can because of the fact that there were so many misstatements in it. For example, the statement from the legal counsel's office of the protester was saying that if we pass this bill, then it's gonna allow the port to then go ahead with their award, suggesting that we're gonna, that we're now, they're gonna be able to just basically cancel that lawsuit, make it moot, and then move on. And that's not the case. The fact of the matter is that whatever has transpired, whatever's in the court, remains there. All it does, all this bill does, is that if the port decides to reissue the bid, then we are simply removing that one obstacle where one person can in fact be the obstacle in this whole process. The other misstatement that is made in this legal brief here that was provided is that, you know, this is very important, we can't do this because this is a three hundred, potentially a three hundred million dollar contract, and even the port is puzzled by where did they get three hundred million dollars? The only figure that was ever closely mentioned about that, about what's going on down at the port, was by regarding the performance management team that over the next twenty years, potentially, to complete the entire master plan, may require an investment of about maybe upwards of three hundred million dollars. So I'm wondering if maybe the legal counsel is confusing the PMT, the performance management team, to oversee the construction, and it's confusing that with a performance management contract, which is simply to oversee the container yard operations, how we move containers in and out. So there was just so many inaccuracies in it that that's what I did with that document. I threw it in the trash can. So, Madam Speaker, I would ask my colleagues to consider this because of the importance to the port of procuring the, this performance management services. Thank you very much.
On the, on the main motion, Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise, you know, with regards to the proposal and not so much the content that is being proposed, not so much the change in the concept of ensuring that we continue the process of moving forward. It's the timing of the issue for me that is of fairly grave concern to me. And the timing of the issue is that, as was articulated, there is a existing protest on the process, and part of the protest is of course, the fact that the process was not followed as outlined by law, and that process that was not followed as being outlined by law is now, is now being changed by this bill, and we're saying that it was not integral, that really, the requirement that the chief procurement officer attend those meetings and be part of those meetings is not really material or integral to ensuring that the process is fair, honest, et cetera, et cetera, legal, and that, because we can change it. I mean, it's not, it's not important that we've had her there to the whole issue of ensuring that the process is... ensuring that the process is, is followed and, and adhered to because we're making the change now. It's, it's, it's not really that important. And while the court and all the pleadings are, are in the court, uh, and under the protests, it's making that change at this time without that issue being settled, without the court or the appeals process, wherever stage they're at, having been decided based upon the existing statute. And if we can change the statute in the middle of this proceedings, then maybe the court, it may influence the court in deciding one way or the other. If the legislature's saying today that you can take her out and not require her to be there and it really doesn't matter, then perhaps this thing can move forward. So to me is, I'm, maybe I am trying to read the court's mind and how the court would react to passing this statute at this time. Uh, and I am concerned about that because, as we all are, of the due process of individuals and that reliance that individuals and companies that want to do business with the government of Guam place upon the laws passed by this body. So if, if everything was settled and today, uh, you know, there's no, nothing, I, I probably will support this bill, or I will support it. I will support ensuring, you know, that if she missed a meeting, that the show doesn't stop. Uh, but at this time, I'm concerned about how it would affect, uh, the trust and the integrity, uh, that people place in the laws passed by this government, in the adherence of individuals charged with adhering to that law, and the reliance that people who want to do business with this government can have on the laws that we enact. And if their reliance is, you can change it at any time, which is true, but it's at any time in which there has been a challenge to it, I, I think that's, that will have a chilling effect, in my opinion, on the integrity of the, of the statutes in place, the laws in place, uh, and of the effect it may have and the perception that the court system may have on what to rely on, that we didn't think it was that important because we, we decided to go ahead and, and reverse our position. Uh, and again, it is the timing of the matter for me that is very, uh, very concerning. And acting on this bill at this time with those outstanding issues, to me, uh, may compromise, uh, again, the integrity, the reliance, uh, that individuals who want to do business with the government of Guam, who rely on the laws and the statutes by, by this government of Guam, uh, and the fact that they will, uh, be able to take that reliance to a final conclusion should they have a problem with the statutes and how it was implemented, uh, and challenge the processes that are set in statute. So I'm not, I'm trying to think whether, you know, it would be better for me to just express this concern and vote no on the bill, or maybe put an amendment on the bill that the effect of this would only be after the court case is done, after the decision is made, um, and that, or upon the issuance of another RFP at some future date. And does that then encapsulate and insulate this, this issue to something in the future and allows the continued reliance of all parties on what was in place and what was required at the time that the RFP was issued, at the time they submitted their bills, I mean, their, their proposals, at the time that the proposals were prepared, and at the time that the, that the protests were filed, the time that the lawsuits were filed, and that it, it encapsulates that and, and puts a wall around it that says, nothing else is going to influence that except what is there at that time. And that this is only going to be in future RFPs, uh, and that, again, I just don't know if that's enough and if that's the proper way of handling this, or do we just wait until everything's resolved, one way or the other, and then if the decision of the court is, you gotta go to a new RFP, then this law kicks into place and we say, "Under the new RFP now, under the new authority, this is the authorities and the reliance that you can have." I'm just not sure if that's the proper way to go, and maybe I'll just, uh, listen to, to some of my colleagues who may have a perspective on that, uh, and I'm soliciting their perspective on that issue, uh, and then maybe additional discussion, uh, with our legal advisors if that is appropriate. But, uh, so I don't know if I give up my time now that I'll not be able to make an amendment. I don't want to make an amendment at this time. I'm not ready to make that final decision. I'm hoping that, that some of my colleagues who have, uh, in the past engaged in these kind of discussions of when we're debating these issues, um, would, would, would comment, and then, uh, perhaps something can, uh, can be done. Uh, but I am very, very cautious and, and threading very cautiously on this issue because of that, and I think it's very important, uh, that we provide assurances to, uh, companies and organizations that, that decide to participate in providing, uh, goods and services to our government and our community, uh, that the integrity that they, uh, place in, in the laws are there, they're protected, they're insulated from, uh, changes that would undo influence, would, would may have an undue influence on, on any action that they want to take in order to protect the rights that they feel have been granted to them under the laws passed by this government. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangina. On the motion, as Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Um, Sidhuus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sidhuus, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly on this bill and, and know that, um, as we deliberate on, on session floor on bills that make a difference, especially regarding the procurement procedures, uh, we as an august body try to find it in our hearts to see, um, that when we make decisions and procedures and procurement laws are placed, that those, uh, rules and regulations and those procedures are followed to the best of the government's, um, um, to the best of their ability. Um, most recently, uh, before this new bill was, um, introduced by Senator Ada, four eight eight, which was that act to amend that section of, uh, ten four oh one, title twelve TCA, um, um, for the port authority, uh, in reference the, to the partner, public-private partnerships for this, uh, performance, uh, management contract, uh, there was a recent law before that, that had very thorough, um, processes put in place as noted by the attorney general's office, working closely with the author of the previous law, which was Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and of course, members within the committee, and there was a thorough, uh, reporting of, of how even our own rules and regulations, uh, need to be updated and renewed because there are some, uh, procedures are put, are put in place today that may hamper processes of new, uh, management programs that need to be moving forward, especially the one that is happening today at the port authority. Um, when this, um, legislation was introduced, Bill four eighty-eight by Senator Ada, the public hearing noted, uh, by, uh, Mr. Augustine, that, um, he provided, uh, testimony in support of this measure, and he noted that the passage of this amendment is crucial in the final aware of the performance management, uh, contract. And he said, "Although we do not want to take away from the chief procurement officer's role, we do recognize that the CPO, uh, chief procurement officer, is primarily responsible of the procurement of all materials and supplies for, for over forty government of Guam agency." And he also noted that this was a ve, uh, tremendous task and may not allow their CPO, their chief procurement officer, to fully participate in the procurement process of the PMC as mandated by that current law. And it went further to say that with the port's exhilarated efforts and timely lists, frequent meetings and working sessions will take place and may result in conflicting schedules off that CPO. And, um, it was noted that the port does not want to further delay the project, or do they want to impede on the CPO's, uh, primary responsibilities? And with the attorney generals having oversight and legal advisory responsibilities of the PMC procurement process, the body can be assured that all phases of the solicitation process and all procurement laws would be adhered to. And again, Madam Speaker, he further stated that the PMC will be handled, uh, will handle the management of the cargo terminal operations and the maintenance of the cargo handling equipment, which will help increase efficiency and reduce costs. Uh, lastly, he had noted that the PMC was so crucial, uh, to their work and will definitely give us more, will definitely give the port more credibility throughout the international port and financial markets. And, um, as I was listening to the author of the legislation speak, knowing that we did receive testimony from counsel of, uh, the, uh, the vendor or the firm that protested, uh, this PMC contract, I'm, I too am, am puzzled, or maybe not puzzled, but wanting to make sure that as we have these existing rules and regulations in place and knowing that there was a, a primary reason for Vice Speaker Cruz to, to work closely with our legal advisory, uh, attorneys, which is the attorney general of Guam, and to make sure that, you know, their full representation to the people of Guam is there, I'm, I'm also concerned, Madam Speaker, at, 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 at how one vendor, because he doesn't like what had, the process has gone through to date and feels that he's probably, should have gone the, the, the project over the other company, that that could be, that could hold up the whole process moving forward. So, Madam Speaker, um, I too want to listen intently and hopefully, hopefully, uh, our colleagues will look at this bill, and I'd like to listen to what they have to say because I'm kinda torn. I want to keep the positions in place, the procurement laws in place, knowing that, you know, as, as time comes and, and we venture into more public-private partnerships, as one who is an advocate for public-private partnerships, I'm also concerned about having just one vendor be able to stop a whole process moving forward. So, Madam Speaker, um, I literally, I, I want to tell the author of this legislation is, is I'm, I, I want to support him, but I also want to be very careful about taking something away that's really there to protect the procurement process and how it moves forward. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to at least vet, uh, this, this concern. Sidhuus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. On the motion, are there any others, any speakers? Senator Espaldana, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, uh, the previous speakers, two speakers, they are three speakers even, have referenced, uh, in essence, a legal opinion by an attorney or a, a legal firm that represents a protester on, on a recent bid at the port. And I just want to state for the record that when they mentioned that, that was the first time I've ever heard of this, of this document, and, uh, one of my good colleagues just, uh, shared it with me, the, the, the letter from legal counsel of one of the, uh, complainants in the case against the port procurement process. There are some interesting issues that the attorneys bring up, and in looking at, at the bill, I still haven't, I also rise to basically say that I'm not really sure where I would stand right now on this bill concerning, uh, considering the fact that, uh, my good colleague from Baragada mentioned that perhaps the timing on this might be questionable and what it would do to some of the legal processes that are now taking place. I'm not sure that some of the arguments that are, my good colleague from Baragada, uh, were, were real concerns because the court will definitely look at the laws that were in place at the time of the alleged infraction of a contract and apply those rules and laws, uh, to the issue before the court. However, again, the concern becomes, will passing this bill, um, sway or have some kind of effect upon, uh, the court's decision? Again, I don't want to assume and I don't want to predict what the court will do in this case. However, that being said, uh, again, there, there was enough that has been said just by the previous two speakers, uh, in their concerns, that I would have to take a closer look at the arguments that were proffered by the legal counsels of the plaintiff in the case against the port, uh, to be able to even vote on this bill at this time. I'm hoping that, um, there will be enough discussion, and I'm not sure there will be, uh, looking at the, the, the number of senators we have in the hall right now, that we would prolong at least past lunchtime before it gets moved into a voting file. I would definitely appreciate a little more time to examine the issues because there are some legal implications, uh, surrounding this. However, that being said, I understand the author's full intent because having been chairman of, of the, the port myself at one, uh, during my last term, I understand the necessity of moving forward because, but again, that doesn't negate the fact that we have to do this very, very carefully because when we start talking about changes of the procurement oversight, uh, of, uh, of the chief procurement officer, then we also have to perhaps think in broader terms. What are the implications? Does this open doors or, um, perhaps some, some, some misgivings or misdirections that could happen because of this? I don't know. But I, I'm rising just to say that I too have my concerns at this point until I can fully understand what the legal counsel for one of the plaintiffs against the port is saying before I can actually act on the bill before us. Uh, I too hope that this does not, that me standing right now does not necessarily negate my ability to come before and say, and speak to the issues of the bill once I have done a better analysis, uh, regarding the legal issues and whatnot. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
White Pobetzl, Senator Espaldana, and my brother, Senator Blasch, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and you know, Madam Chair, um, I want to appreciate the discussions that are, are going on the floor with regards to this, to the proposed legislation. And, um, and I too share, um, some concerns, you know, with regards to the timing and the issue with the timing in this. But that said too, Madam Chair, I, I think that, you know, my good colleague from, from Toming here brings up, uh, and, and raises maybe another issue too, and a concern that that I have, recognizing that laws, the legislation that we passed traditionally and generally, um, do not affect the laws as they were retro, as retrospective, recognizing that, you know, as was brought up as a concern from the good, my good colleague from, from Baragada, as, with regards to the timing, as to whether or not this law would, if we were to amend this, whether it would be, have an effect that would retro bat to the beginning? Or does this, in our amendment of the law, then affect everything moving forward? Um, what complicates this whole issue is there's, there is in fact a, a, a current suit that brings to light the issue, this issue of the participation of the chief, chief procurement officer. And so... And so, I don't know whether the intent was to, for lack of a better term, change the law so that the, the, the participation for the Chief Procurement Officer from the onset of the current bid process would have been discretionary as opposed to mandatory? Or does our action on, on the floor as a body, should we decide to vote in favor of this legislation, then cause that the change in the law would only affect things moving forward? So, I too have now that concern as, and I want to thank my good colleague from Tom Mudding again, also for, for bringing this up. What effect will it have? Would it affect everything moving forward as, you know, is probably comforting to, to, to maybe my colleagues here possibly? Or would it affect everything that has, that is current and therefore change the landscape, if you will? For the sake of moving things forward? And, you know, Madam Chair, I recognize that, that, you know, this body too, and, and there are many times, that, and that's the whole purpose of this body is, is to look at where their legis, where laws are lacking, where laws may be faulty, and use the best and better judgment of the majority of the body to be able to make these changes. And so, my concern here is although the intent may be one way, is the consequence or the unintended consequence, what is the unintended consequence to this? What may occur, you know, with, that we did not intend for it to occur? Or what will occur although we intended otherwise? And, and, and I, I too am going to ask, as, again, my colleague Senator Espaldana has asked, is, is to please have time to be able to, to, to further review this and research this. I, I think it can be done, you know, over the next couple hours. I, I do believe that this, this discussion, this legislation is important enough so that when we do go in and it is time for us to vote on this, that all of us make that informed So, and, and that's what I'm asking for, Madam Chair, is, is for additional time, pass the time that we have prior to, before we can continue to deliberate on this because I think that in the discussions that we can have, that could spur more discussions, more deliberations on this matter, you know, tweak the bill, amend it, so that it does come out, so that there is that true intent and there is no unintended consequence. Thank you.
Juan Pobeto, Senator Blas, Senator?
Madam Speaker, if I may, since my colleagues have asked for additional time, maybe over lunchtime, to, you know, read through the issue a little bit more and reconsider it. If I may, just maybe take a couple of minutes to just provide them with additional things to think about while they are in fact reconsidering this issue.
I'll, I'll call for a five-minute, I mean, a couple of minutes recess.
Well, if I may, just go ahead and if I, if I could do it on the floor now.
Oh, yes, yes. And, 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 but before I did that, I wanted to ask Mr. Senator Ada if anybody else wanted to speak first because I could address that as a uniting to Senator Blas's concerns. I, I would take that as a uniting and, and, and give you that opportunity, Senator Ada.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First of all, the speaker from Baragada, who made the suggestion that may be language to the effect that makes it very clear that the discretionary participation of the Chief Procurement Officer shall only apply prospectively in the event that the, the request for proposal is reissued. I'm receptive to that because it just further reinforces the intent of the bill. It never had any intention of changing anything that has transpired. Now, whether by passing this legislation now puts a chilling effect, you know, that I don't know. I mean, that, that's, I guess that's up to the judge to decide whether he's been chilled by it or not. But all the bill really intends to do is to lay the groundwork so that we remove obstacles and we don't get ourselves back in the same situation. And we, one thing we can be sure of is that the RFP will have to be reissued unless, well, I shouldn't say that. The port has the option, I presume, to at any time say, we're terminating this, this particular award and we're going to go back to square one and do it over. They can, I, I presume that they can do that unilaterally. Or the court could find in favor of the protester and direct Port Authority to, to reissue. Or I guess a third scenario is that the court could find it in favor of the port, that they in fact have, there's no basis for reissuing and that the award that they made stands. But I would just like to point out that when this particular bill was introduced, the amendment was made to actually require that the AG be involved in, from start to finish. And that was motivated by the fact that we had the JFK procurement fiasco, we had the gantry crane procurement fiasco, and so, and those, and those, the shortcomings were not caught until it finally got to the end of the line up at the AG's office. So, the amendment was put in, let's get them involved from the front end. The requirement for an observer other than the Attorney General was for the OPA, but the OPA asked to be, be, be recused because in the event of a protest, she would have to be the one that would have to actually be reviewing the case. So, the general manager at the port volunteered, and this was according to the minutes and whatnot, volunteered says, why don't we make it the Chief Procurement Officer? And I think an underlying assumption in putting in the Chief Procurement Officer was that the Chief Procurement Officer will in fact be available at all the scheduled meetings. Records show that there were times when the Chief Procurement Officer said, I can't make it, I got a schedule conflict, can we reschedule? That was done to accommodate. There were also many times when despite the fact that notice was provided to the Chief Procurement Officer, the Chief Procurement Officer did not show up. And so, I, I guess the decision was made, we need to proceed forward. Now, clearly, that was a violation of the law because the law says she shall observe all the proceedings. And if we don't remove that obstacle, then we'll write back to that same situation where one person. The fact of the matter is that the Chief Procurement Officer has been off island up to this very day since, I believe since June. During an attempt by one of the attorneys to try and get ahold of her so they can take a deposition, nobody really knows. Can we get a telephone number where we can contact you at so that we can do at least a telephonic deposition? The response back was, well, I can give you the telephone number of a gas station that's down the block and you can call me there at a time or whatever. But, you know, the individual, apparently where she's at, doesn't even have a telephone and, and nobody's been able to get ahold of her. I've sent a mess, I've sent a request to the Department of Administration asking, when will the individual be back? Who's in acting position? Nothing. I haven't gotten a response back. So, are we going to let that one person actually stop the whole show? And ironically, the procurement manager down at the port is somebody who was actually trained by the Chief Procurement Officer. If now we're saying that that individual is incompetent and only the Chief Procurement Officer is competent, then I guess that doesn't speak well of the training that was provided by the Chief Procurement Officer. If in fact the Chief Procurement Officer is so critical because she's the only one that possesses the, the, the technical knowledge of how these things should be done, yet sends down a, somebody who's much more junior in the ranks, then I question really how critical that is. So, I would ask my colleagues to look at it from the perspective of the fact that we've got a port modernization, a plan that needs to be implemented. And while that hundred million dollar construction is going on, it's got to appear seamless. The flow of containers and cargo through that port has got to continue to move uninterrupted. Otherwise, we're going to see a backup, we're going to go, we're going to see ships lining up, and we're going to see unnecessary charges being added to the cargo because the, the ships have to add on the additional expenses of waiting and whatnot. So, again, it was never the intent of changing anything that has transpired. All it's saying is if that RFP gets reissued, then let's change the requirement for the Chief Procurement Officer to be an observer from being a mandatory, changing it to being discretionary. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blas, you still have the floor?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And you know, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the good author for yielding to, to the concern and answering the question that I have. And, and I, I'd like, and I'm sure that many of our colleagues here would like to continue to, to, to deliberate and collaborate on, on being able to address some of the concerns that we have. I appreciate the, and, you know, the, the author is, is not adverse to making sure that this, this legislation is prospective as opposed to, to retro. But the, there is still a concern with regards to just reviewing and, and looking over the, the writ, a copy of the writ filed in the complaint. There are some, there is still some concern that I have with regards to whether or not, even if we were to change and amend the law, will that, will that affect the new? And the, and the court was to decide that, yes, in fact, the petitioners do have, you know, proper grievance, they rule in favor of it, and this is, this is again theoretical, and the court says, you know, port, you're going to have to go back and, and go back to square one. What is square one? Is square one, is the court going to tell them, go back and use the old law? Or is the court then saying that they have to use the law? So, I think those are some of the concerns that need to be talked about before we can further deliberate. And, and being so close to the hour, ma'am, I'm, I'm asking if we can go ahead and break for, break for lunch, give us some time to be able to talk about this and then come back, you know, later on in the afternoon. So, if, and if the author don't, doesn't mind that, that, that motion, that's the motion that I would call.
Thank you, Senator Blas. There's a motion on the floor to recess until two o'clock this afternoon without objection. Motion carries, we are recessed until two this afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, before we departed for lunch, recessed for lunch, we had Senator Tom adding a uniting to Senator Frank Blas's concern, and we recessed for lunch with the commitment that we'd get back to Speaker Ben Pangolino to possibly work his amendments. So, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and address Speaker Pangolino, you have the floor right now.
Seidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to offer an amendment. I think it's just being copied at this time. And it, for, for me, it provides what I think is maybe a, a buffer for the action that this body will take and its effect on any of the outstanding issues that may remain from the current RFP that was issued and the challenge issued to that RFP's award. As I mentioned, that the requirement for the procurement of the PMT contract at the Port Authority was guided by existing statute. And what this statute would do would change one of those requirements. In effect, to me, could be construed as changing our horses in midstream or our carabao as more appropriate for our community. So, given that, Madam Speaker, my preference is that if we want to do this and we know that they cannot issue a new RFP until that matter's resolved. In other words, a new RFP for the contract that's being challenged or the award that's being challenged cannot at this time because of the rights that have been asserted by individual parties involved in that procurement process, nothing can go forward. A new RFP can't be issued out, a, an award can't be issued out until that matter's resolved. So, there really is no need to change the law at this time. Why change something which may affect something that's out there now, which may influence that, which may taint it, which may color it, which may prejudice, prejudicial to the, to, to that matter for one party or the other? And we want to, as this body, you know, prevent ourselves or, or safeguard ourselves from intruding in those kind of issues, if not directly, then indirectly by passing statutes that are currently under question. And so, why do it now? Why not wait and pass this bill after all that matter's resolved and then there is no question? Then there is absolutely no question that anybody can say that this body has injected itself into a controversy that's not ripe or into, into a matter that's not ripe because it's still being challenged, it's still being, question is still being litigated. What's the harm in waiting until that matter is resolved? And then, when that matter is resolved one way or the other and they want to issue a new RFP, then we put this provision in there and then it's absolutely a clean slate. There's no outstanding issue, nobody has any question because the courts would have decided if that's the ultimate decision point that's, that will resolve from this issue. And then it's, it's brand new, tablarasa, you know? But what we're doing now, in, in, to me, even if, if, if we can make the argument, and, and of course you can always make the argument, that it will have no effect on it. But do we really know? And is it because, is it necessary to do it at this time? I think it's absolutely unnecessary to implement this law at this time with an existing controversy surrounding this law. That's all, that's all I'm saying. If this was to be brand new with nothing out there, I'd probably vote for it. But because of that, because individuals has asserted their rights under the existing statute, for us to change that statute when it's, when I can't see any need to do it now, makes me uncomfortable. And to me, sends a message and, and taints the, the, taints, you know, the, the, the issue of, of being open, fair, honest, unprejudiced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, that really is my only concern with regards to this. It's not that one party's going to prevail or the other party because I have no interest in which party prevails other than the court, than the court getting the best deal it can and gets the most qualified individual that it, that is possible to help it achieve its mission. That's, that's my only concern in this whole procurement process and that it doesn't economically harm the people of Guam in putting this kind of program into place and doesn't affect the livelihoods and, you know, and the lives of our men and women who work at the port. So, in that respect, that, that really is, is my only concern and my only interest in this whole process. this whole process. And this brings the question legislative intrusion into the whole process in which a controversy currently exists. And I don't believe that, to me, would be prudent legislative policy to do so. I think it brings into question the validity of the actions of this body and the integrity of the legislative process and laws that this body has passed, that once somebody questions it, we're going to change it because we want to go one way or the other. And, and again, I am, I fully, I fully am satisfied that the author's motivations in this is the same as mine and that he has no desire to influence what is the current controversy one way or the other by passing this bill. I fully am very, very, very confident that none of that is in any of the thinking or any of the motivation that's resulting from this. We just have a different perspective on what the effect of doing it now at this time that he has. He just wants to be a little bit more proactive and I want to be a little bit more cautious. I, I'm a little bit more concerned about, or my perspective, you know, pushes me into a position that weighs one factor more heavily than the other factor. And that's why we're, we're on a little bit of a gap here with regards to our positions. But our end goal is the same on this thing, and that is to ensure the best procurement process we have, a smooth one that protects the interests of the port and the people and the community of Guam and the port family down there. So I'm very confident in that and that I have no questions on that issue itself. But again, you know, it doesn't need to be done now because I think that the fact that something exists out there. So in, in an attempt to kind of buffer and build some kind of wall, like I said, between what is out there right now and insulating that process to ensure that this legislative action doesn't taint, doesn't prejudice the rights that have been asserted by parties associated with that procurement and try to fence it off and Chinese wallet as much as we can, I would like to offer this amendment for that purpose. And the amendment would be to add a new section to the bill that would make the effective date of the law after the resolution of that controversy. And so the bill, I mean, the amendment that she will have handed out would basically add a new section to the bill that says this act shall be effective only upon the termination of any pending or existing award or the cancellation of any RFP, MSB, or IFB issued pursuant to 12 GCA 10401 prior to November 24th, 2010. And that the provisions of this act shall apply in the event of the reissuance or the issuance of a new RFP, MSB, or IFB for the management, operation, and maintenance of its cargo handling equipment through a performance management contract pursuant to 12 GCA 10041. And again, this is my attempt to provide some remediation for any effect and mitigation for any effect that may result from the action of the body that it takes with, with under this law with regards to an existing controversy and wall it off for, to ensure that we protect the integrity and the rights of all of the individuals involved in that, in the existing process and in the existing controversy until such time that it's resolved. Thank you, and Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. On the amendment, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, first of all, I object to the amendment and I am opposing it for the following reasons. First of all, the amendment reads that the act shall be effective, this act shall be effective, in other words, the discretionary participation, the act that makes the participation of the chief procurement officer discretionary. It will be effective only upon the termination of, I guess in this case, the court, the stake, first of all, the existing court case. Well, when does it end? We all know that it starts at the lower court, then it gets appealed, then it goes up, then it gets appealed, it could drag on and on and on. So it's really a moving target. If, if, you know, just where is that termination? Where's that closure at? So I have a problem with that. Or it shall be effective if in the case that the port decides to cancel the RFP, an action which I think it's a, that's a, an action that I doubt, I really doubt that the Port Authority will do that because if it does that, you know, it terminates that award and says, okay, we'll throw everything out and we're going to go back and start all over again. And, and, and so if it does that, guess what? The guy who was initially awarded now is going to be the one filing a lawsuit and the guy who was number two is now going to be filing a lawsuit because now he's lost that advantage of being the alternate in the event that the primary awardee falls through the cracks. So it's unlikely that the port is going to cancel this award. The third part of the amendment here says that it shall be effective in the event of the reissuance or the issuance of a new RFP. Now, I guess when I read that, it means that somehow there's going to be changes made in that RFP which makes it now somewhat different and makes it new than what was initially put out. But what if in the case that there's really nothing else to change other than the procedure or the manner in which the proceedings were carried out? For example, instead of giving out the packets to the evaluation team to take out to their respective offices and score them, that we'll lock everybody in, sequester them in a room, and, and we'll do that because that's one of the items that got questioned. And, and so that may be the only change that may take. So those are the concerns that I have with this amendment, Madam Speaker. Now, if, if we, as I indicated, if we, if we amend it such that, you know, it's contingent upon, it'll be, it'll kick in after the court case is closed, well, we just don't know when that would be. The, if the court, if the court directs, I mean, the court, and again, will be just purely speculating what the court will decide. The court could say, go back and reissue it and do everything again, and then after you have made a new award, and it could be the same awardee, then that's when the case is closed. So it's, it's, it's a moving target and it's really hard, it's just not clear at all. If by not passing this amendment, it does not bring everybody into the comfort zone and we, the bill fails, here's what could happen then basically, I think. The court proceedings go on, the court awards it in the favor of the port and says proceed. Of course, the appellant is going to appeal and it drags out and on and on and on. Then there's the possibility that the appellant won't appeal and will accept the judgment of the court. And then after that, then now we move to the final phase of the RFP process and that is the court, after the court upholds the award, now we enter into the negotiation process. But, but then what happens is we still, this provision, the mandatory attendance by the chief procurement officer, again, if the chief procurement officer cannot, does not, decides not to make herself available, you know, this whole thing can be dragged out. And here's, here's what we're fighting against. On October 4th, the attorney for the appellant appeared before the OPA and asking for, I guess, a delay of the hearing because the appellant requires the testimony from the material witness, the chief procurement officer, who is currently off island on a personal matter. The appellant's legal counsel has not been able to contact this material witness via telephone since the appeal was initiated. Her employer, the General Services Agency, is unable to confirm whether she will return to Guam by the hearing date, and as far as I know, she's still not back on Guam. The chief procurement officer has been uncooperative with the appellant's counsel and she has sent emails stating that she does not know when she will return to Guam, she is unable to provide a phone number, and she has not indicated where she currently is located. So who's to say? I mean, this is what, this is what the port is up against right now. So who's to say that that's not going to be a repeat again if the court says, go ahead and, and I'll uphold the award, proceed with the rest of the RFP process? And so we're right back to the same thing again. The chief procurement officer could decide to absent herself and we're back again to the problem of obstructing the process, a process that is very important to be able to get procurement management services so that we can keep the operations at the port flowing smoothly while the millions of dollars of construction is taking place to modernize our port. So Madam Speaker, I rise in objection of this amendment.
On the amendment, any other speakers? Senator Palacios, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I sat and listened to both presentations and they both make sense to me. The presentation by the Senator from Barigada appear, of course, to have accepted, of course, the intent of the bill itself, but make it effective after the settlement of the ongoing litigation. Now, it came to my, to my mind that why don't, a simple sentence that says that the provisions of this act does not apply to whatever is that case? So that we still have the law, for example, passed for any other bidding or any other process from your own, from your own forth except for what is under current litigation? And that at any time that current litigation is settled in some way, withdrawn or whatever, then, then of course, it applies completely to everything else after that. But we can say, for example, that the provision of this act shall be, shall apply prospectively. So that, I mean, that's an idea, though I think that will still preserve the ongoing litigation and at the same time, we will be able to have the, the provision of this amendment in, in effect and, and then have the, the attendance of the GSA officer discretionary and not mandatory. That's just my comment because both, both make sense to me. Of course, we have to not pass this on the risk that it might interfere in some way with the current litigation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the amendment, are there any other speakers? Senator Pangolinan, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, then I, I may be a little bit off then in my assumptions on this because my assumptions would be that we do want the current law to apply to that case, but that's not the, what I heard. I heard was that we just, once, once we even can get any kind of opening to move forward and leave this protest behind, we're going to change the law even if it's not settled. So there is motivation to kind of do away with this, to, to say this doesn't count anymore and we're going to go ahead and move forward. We're going to change the procurement process in the middle of a procurement. And that even causes me even greater concern now with regards to what this bill will do. This bill is going to change and allow us to award a procurement process after procurement is done and we're going to change it when it's got challenged. Now, that to me is just totally unacceptable and I cannot vote for this bill in that, with that kind of thinking, I think, that I've heard. And if the idea is that it is only going to apply to that, it can't. Leaving it alone will mean it only applies to that because no other procurement can go forward until that is settled. That's exactly what we're saying. But no, no. The objective is to allow the procurement to go forward even with that challenge in the, after, after an award under that process that we are going to change today and legitimize that process that was violated or legitimize awarding an RFP to somebody that in a procurement process in which the procurement law and procurement process was violated. And that is just unacceptable. I don't think this body should be doing that. I think absolutely the integrity of, of the government of Guam is at stake. If we're going to allow something to proceed after it's challenged by changing what was wrong in that process and now saying everything's okay, proceed with a guy who got it under a system that's not legal or that did not follow the law. That to me is, is risky, that to me is unacceptable, that to me compromises the integrity of the government of Guam and its procurement process and the actions of its officers. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. So on the Pangolinan amendment, all those who are in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the amendment, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven. Failed to get the required votes. On the main motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, Senator Ada, do you want to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, it appears that the prime, I guess a, one of the major objections is that we're going to be changing the rules of the game midstream. But actually, while that is correct, that we're changing it, it'll be changed, it's being changed after an award has been made. And of course, the port is proceeding on the premise that it's going to prevail, that in fact, it did things properly and it can support its actions and justify it and that the court will uphold it. And what this bill does is now it's laying the groundwork so that it can proceed forward without any further obstruction to be able to execute a performance management contract. Now, I know that a concern was raised that, you know, changing the game and the, changing the rules in the middle of the game may just open it up for more lawsuit, possibly could. And then again, someone might argue that the change that is being made is not that substantive to really even provide grounds for, for a challenge because the change that is being made is simply making the participation of the chief procurement officer discretionary and not mandatory. There's no language in there that says that she is no longer going to get received notices of when meetings are going to be scheduled, when meetings are going to be held. There's nothing in the language in the bill that changes the requirement that the port continue to provide her with all the RFP-related documentation. And there's nothing in the bill that says that she cannot or she's prohibited from participating any further. It just simply says, we recognize that you have other, 40 other agencies that you It just simply says, "We recognize that you have other, 40 other agencies that you have to oversee their procurement activities for, and if you feel at that time that there's a, there's a schedule conflict here with another agency that you feel is more important at that time, then certainly she should have that discretion to go ahead and spend her time with that agency and have, if she feels comfortable enough that the port, there's enough oversight being provided to the port on the RFP process." So I, I appeal to my colleagues to favorably consider the bill, because again, it's very important that we have professional performance management services at that port to be able to keep the flow of cargo traffic through that, through that port while all this construction is going on and none of the incoming cargo is being delayed, the cargo that's going to our retail stores, the cargo that's going to the, to the construction companies, for the military buildup, and for other buildup activities outside of the fence. We want to keep that going as smoothly as possible, and I think that just by removing this one obstacle, it would allow us to help to facilitate that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Ada. So on the motion then to send Bill 48A to third reading file then without any objections? Senator Respechel, you're recognized. I think that was the last bill that, oh, no, I'm sorry. Senator Uggan, you see here?
Yeah, you see, I'm sorry.
Okay, can I take a brief recess?
Right. Yes. No, no, it's substituted, we cited. I cited it earlier. That's why I said yes, it's from Bill.
Okay. We do, Madam Speaker. Then I'll get your copy.
I was saying, the House rules, I moved that we revert back to motions for a purpose of placing some bills on the second reading file.
On that motion, if there's no objection, motion carries, Senator Respechel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I guess we've learned that in the legislative process, as we've also learned in life, that the reward for, that the reward for working hard and getting things done is you get to work harder. And so at this time, I'm, I, I passed out a list of eight bills that I'd like to move on the agenda, beginning with Bill 474. So we put this at the bottom of the second reading file, but really where we're at in the second reading file, when you call us back in the second reading, we'll start with Bill 474. That's by Senator Tadekui. Actually, I'll just read the bill numbers. Bill 474, and then Bill 372, Bill 401, Bill 402, Bill 403, Bill 453. I want to add an additional, Bill 459, and then Bill 479, in that order.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, of course, the remaining bills that are there are still on the second reading file.
So, so the motion is to put all these bills, as you listed, in, as you listed, will, will go on the second reading?
Yeah, and then after, I want to amend my motion that after Bill 474, to move up Bill 479.
To, right after Bill 474?
Yeah. And then to be fair, Madam Speaker, Bill 453 should actually be third. This is, this should have already been on the, this should have already been on the session agenda, but it was my oversight. So Bill 474, then Bill 479, then Bill 453, then the remaining bills from 372 down will follow.
Okay. On that motion, just, just for the record, it would be 474, 479, 453, 372, 401, 402, 403, 453, and 459.
No, 453 already called.
I'm sorry, already been called, yes. On that motion, are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries, Senator Respechel.
And I moved that we, we resume discussions in the second reading file.
On that motion without objections, motion carries. Senator Respechel, then, right now, we would be on Bill number 474, and I will address Senator Tadekui, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I, I would like to first thank very much for the opportunity to go forth on this bill as being at the top of the list, and I just want to share my, my grateful Don Calucitos Massey to the good chairman on Committee of Rules for doing this. As you know, that we've had the residents of the Gil Baza and Zero Down individuals at our doorsteps in the public hearing room for the last two days, and the hardships in which it takes for them to be here to advocate for this cause, for this bill, the support is commendable, where many of them do not have vehicles to be here. Many of them catch the bus or try to ask other relatives to bring them down for something that's so worthy for them, for the future of those children in that area. But first, before I go on, I'd like to ask that you accept Bill 474 into the...
I was just going to ask that.
Second reading?
On the, here.
Substituted on the floor by committee?
As substituted by the committee on...
As substituted on the floor by the committee. Okay. As substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Service and Judiciary and Further, substituted on the floor, to be placed in the second reading file, third, third reading file, and I would like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed, Senator Tadekui.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker. I apologize for that, as I know this may be my last bill that I, I get to introduce into these halls, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity, but most especially for this particular bill. As you know, Madam Speaker, this bill was introduced with the other intentions in mind as I had the opportunity with the good chairman of the Committee on Transportation and, not transportation, that's, that's true, but good committee chair on, from Baragada or Manila to find the ability to have this project move forward, meaning that during this oversight hearing, it was recognized and found that certain monies for the pothole repair fund that was intended for it by a bond that was sold a while ago, that there was still some excess money after the projects that were completed was still in the account. The intention was for the pothole repair. The oversight was with regards to the Baragada Tri-Intersection along with some other areas that were being deemed as highway project funds, federal highway projects funds that was being constructed right now, and the lack of mitigation needed to handle the excess, the roads used as alternative routes to bypass these construction areas, causing much of the villages to have streets that were damaged and continue to bring faster wear and tear to those village streets. And as we know, that most highway funds only are able to be used for highway funds and not at the village level. So, Madam Speaker, recognizing that, and unfortunately, it was, it was a decision I made because of the fact that it was election time, that I did not want to bring this up during that time and wanted to wait till after the election, an area that actually will break anyone's heart. And that's the area of the Gil Baza and Down Zero, which is also called the Vujawani subdivision. For many, many, many years, we know the situation that happened at Gil Baza. An individual taking advantage of those who are most needy, who didn't have the education or the ability or the know-how to be able to read certain contracts, to understand that what they were buying was a little bit more than what they anticipated. I think what they wanted was just a home to provide for their children. And these individuals are some of the poorest individuals we will ever meet here on this island. And taking advantage of those individuals is the worst thing you can do to any human Not only do they have to live day by day without the ability to have a decent home that they can keep clean at all times and not worry about bacteria or fungus or anything that can cause disease or hardships or any ailment to their families, not having a sewer system is one thing. Thank God that the judicial system has ruled in their favor with regards to this. But what was not given to them, which they thought was supposed to be given to, was the ability to access their homes by the main road, and not knowing this, when they bought their property, that the, the undivided interest in the access to that subdivision was also given to them as well. This means that every owner in the Gil Baza subdivision area for the access that was given to them, they own a percentage of. So that becomes private. Now, in order for the government to take over this road, there has to be what's called a quick claim deed to the government so that the government would be able to take this road and pave this road for them. There are over 200 families in this area, Madam Speaker, with many, many children. In fact, it takes two busloads to bring them home, not just one bus, but two busloads for the children that live in this area. Once they are dropped off, they are dropped off in an area that takes them almost 20 minutes to get home, which for some people, I remember in the olden days, it was, it was 20 minutes was nothing. But they did not have to walk through mud, trash, and to the point where most of these families do not have the ability to take their children to the bus stop, which is almost a mile long. To endure, what they have to endure is unacceptable, and to some of these parents, it's unthinkable what harm can cause these children just to get to the bus stop. Madam Speaker, I had the opportunity to walk home with these children. As I waited for them at their bus, the first thing I asked the bus driver was, "Why can't you drive into this road and take these children home, closer to home?" He said, "The road is very, very bad, the bus can't get through." And I said, "Well, are there other areas where you go where the road is bad that you drop children in?" He says, "Yes, there is one." Then why can't you go through this road? He says, "Not only is the road very bad, but there's no turnaround for the bus, and that's the difficulty." So listening to what he said, I walked home with these children, and I must admit, it had rained the night before, so I was very fortunate, it wasn't raining that day, but the day that I walked, the sun was shining, but the mud pedals were still there, they were still filled with water, and I just, I had a difficult time even walking, let alone, let alone a car going through there, dodging all the potholes, the water, the smell that was in there from people dumping. You look at that road, you would actually think, "Oh, well, it doesn't matter, you can dump something here because it, it's still going to not change the, what it looks like." It was so unacceptable, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. So I asked the children as I walked them, we were walking home, "What happens if it rains really hard in the morning? How do you get to school?" Of course, many of them, the families don't have vehicles to take them to school, and they said, "Well, our parents keep us home." I said, "They keep you home? You know how many times it rained last month, Madam Speaker? Can you imagine how many times those kids had to stay home and not be given an education?" And these individual people who have to endure what they endure every day, where even getting shoes, shoes for their feet are so difficult. And then not to be able to let them go to school. Whose fault is that, Madam Speaker? Well, we know it's one other person's fault, but he got away with it. Now, it's our responsibility, our responsibility to help these people who desperately, desperately need this help. It's not like most of us who take, take for granted a smooth road, the ability to walk across the street to go to a bus stop. Many of us take advantage of that. These children, they dream of it, and their parents most especially, because, Madam Speaker, and my good colleagues, that's really all they have to make what they want for themselves and for their children, is the ability to have an education so they can make something of themselves. That's all they have. We must give that opportunity to these individuals, who most of them are even below poverty, 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 who can't even afford the shoes they need to walk that dirt road to get to school. So as I'm walking further down, almost getting close to the end, I asked one of the kids, "What happens if you're halfway to the bus stop and it pour, it's pouring raining? What happens after that?" They said they, they run to the bus stop because they don't want to miss school again. They come into the classroom soaked, drenched, mud all over their pants, and the teacher sends them to the nurse. And whether they have a change of clothing or they don't, they call the parents, in which the parents can't pick them up because they don't have a car, the majority of them. They supply them with extra clothing there, which is good, sometimes. After all that's been said, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry to go on and on, but the importance of those individuals in this area that we have forgotten for so long and expect our judicial system, which we know how long it takes, to be able to help these individuals, it's been failing them for years, and can you imagine a child who started kindergarten and had to return back to kindergarten because they missed so many days of school? Yes, we do owe it to these people. We do owe it to the children in this area who go through so many borders, who have so many roadblocks in their life. So, Madam Speaker, after the election, I had a substituted bill to the good chairman and asked him to include... and asked him to include the building of a road. A road that, after speaking with many of the people in the down Gilbaza subdivision, and especially an individual, Margarita Titino, who's been spearheading this with Mr. and Mrs. Santos, to call this road "The Road of Dreams." But that comes at a later time. So I'm gonna refer this as "The Road of Dreams", because this road has no name at this point, but we're hoping it does. Say it in Chamorro, "The Road of Dreams." So, Madam Speaker, I have a map here that I will pass out so that everybody will be able to see the map. After all this was done, doing my due diligence and researching the area and finding how we can make this happen, et cetera, down the line, we were able to work with DPW. DPW then said that we can build the road, without even going through procurement process, that they can build the road. We asked for an estimate on this road. And the good director of DPW shared that estimate after doing his research and bringing everybody into the game here in his department, as well as land management, as well as Guam Water Authority. Everybody to the table, we found that the cost would be $800,000. So recognizing the intent at the beginning of the Pothole Repair Fund was Baragata. We recognized that even after the money that was found in this bill, I mean, the source of funding that was found way exceeds what we're requesting for in this bill. So, Madam Speaker, lastly, the bill includes Baragata as well. $250,000 to be reserved for the repair of streets and damages or access traffic mitigation actions within the village of Baragata, including Toto Canada Road, caused by increased traffic resulting from road construction project at the Tri intersection. So, Madam Speaker, I humbly, humbly, with all my heart and soul, please ask my colleagues to support these children. Because when you support this bill, you support many of those children who are not given an opportunity, and now an opportunity to make something better for themselves and contribute to our island of Guam. Sido Smase. And Madam Chair, I'd like to include you on this as a sponsor. Only after Senator Pangolinan. Okay, then Senator Barnes, and then Senator Guthertz.
Are there any objections? No objection. Motion carries. Okay, next to speak on the bill, I have Senator Ada, then Senator Ben, and then Senator Guthertz. No, Uggins first. Senator Uggins, you're recognized. Senator Uggins, I under... Speaker Ben, you're recognized.
Sido Smase, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I stand certainly, after listening to my good colleague explain the bill, and having worked with her on it, I certainly stand in full support. And I think that understanding what this bill would do should lead us to making a contribution to the lives of individuals. And that's what government's all about. You know, and we have many, many demands that are placed upon this government by our communities. And we do our best in this to prioritize those demands and prioritize the limited resources that we have. But all that we try to do is pass legislation in here that would lead towards improving the lives of our people and those of the people who have chosen to make Guam their home and contribute to our community. And I know that some people are gonna say, "Well, you know, what do these people contribute?" And if the only thing they contribute is their dreams, and when one person achieves that dream, then I think that's enough. That's more than enough. It builds the character of the community. It builds goodwill in the community. And it really is an investment in our resources of human capital in our community. And so no matter who it serves, whether it serves a person who has come to this island or a person who was born here, once that decision is made that they're gonna make this place their home, we want them to treat it with respect, and we want them to become a part of this community. And a way of becoming a part of this community and gaining their respect is that the community takes its responsibility to everyone seriously and acts on that responsibility. And I think that, and I want to commend my good colleague, for one, not taking the opportunity to exploit this situation for any kind of political gain. And some would even say that she couldn't anyway because they're not a voting constituency. But I know when I listen, and I know when I talk to her, that that is the furthest thing from her motivation. And that it really is just responding to people in need, taking responsibility for it, and having the government shoulder that responsibility. Because these people, by the action we take today, I'm confident will return the trust and confidence that we have and the investments that we make in that community, and will improve their lives and thus contributing to improvement of our lives. And with that simple thought, I want to end and congratulate my colleagues and thank her for her diligence on this and the hard work she's put into it, and everybody else that will give this their kind and thoughtful and generous consideration. Sido Smase, Madam Speaker.
One, Povetso, Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Uggins, are you ready with your amendment? On the motion, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too would like to stand and commend the sponsor of this particular legislation and for looking out for the welfare of several of our members of our community. Think that when you look at the actual appropriation that's being provided here, first and foremost, she took the initiative to try to seek out the resources so that it can address two components. One is the Tri intersection. We all know, if any of us has traversed along the Tri intersection of Route 8, Route 16, and Route 10, between Baragata, as well going down towards Dedidu, I think we all know the challenges that we all face in that particular traffic location, only because of the ongoing construction activity. Well, one section here would provide up to $250,000 for the repair of street damages or associated traffic mitigation within the village of Baragata and Toto Canada Road. And you know, Madam Speaker, just to be able to try to save a little bit of time, there've been a few occasions where I've diverted from the main roadway into some of these side streets to be able to get out towards a different direction. And there's one particular street that has, I believe, three or four bumps, only because since the diversionary option became available because of the traffic congestion in that construction area, many of our people decided to use that. Well, my understanding is that the intent of one of these provision, which is the allocation of $250,000, is to be able to not only upgrade, but to restore that streetway so that the families who live in that particular area can be able to enjoy that road once again, once the entire construction at the Tri intersection is completed. And that's very noble on the part of the sponsor of the legislation because she's looking ahead. She's not only looking at addressing an issue that our people have to be inconvenienced with, or situation that our people are inconvenienced with at the moment, but most importantly, being able to look ahead and try to support those families because they're allowing many of our vehicles on island to be able to use those roadways. Well, the second component is something that she highlighted extensively. And I don't think there's any need, Madam Speaker, for me to be able to expound to that any further, other than trying to improve the quality of lives of our people by being able to repair this particular streetway. You know, I looked at this and I shared with the good sponsor of the legislation, and it's an issue that had perhaps been a concern with yours truly since yesterday when I saw really the provision and how the resources were gonna be applied. And I asked her if she would consider the possibility of allowing the government to be able to pursue public access of these roadways so that they automatically become public easements, and then the government can come in and repair their roads. And I'm very pleased to know that at least she was amenable to being able to accept that as a possibility. Well, Madam Speaker, just on that note, I think that we need to continue to stay on the premise that anytime that major public resources are being applied, unless it's a safety hazard, that really the government should have direct access of these roadways, especially if we're gonna assume the responsibility of repairing it by virtue of applying the resources here in this particular proposal. So, Madam Speaker, in light of that, I do have an amendment that I would like to proffer that would be added to subsection 2 to read right after the Department of Public Works, to read on line 5, "The construction of the Gilbaza Access Road shall not commence prior to the grant of public access for said road easement." And it's in line with, it's on line 5, to be inserted on line 5 in subsection 2. And the idea here is to make sure that if the government's gonna come in, provide and improve on the road infrastructure and the access to the private homes in this particular area, we want to own that responsibility, not only with the use of $800,000, but really in maybe five or six years when in fact the road has to be upgraded even further or expanded at that point in time because of the increased population in that area. And that, I understand that there are some ongoing efforts between the Department of Land Management and DPW to try to work with the property owners so that in fact the appropriate easement and public access would be provided. So this is more or less consistent with some ongoing activity. But I want to ensure that if we are going in as a government entity, we're gonna use public resources, that at least we support these families, we upgrade their roads, their infrastructure, but that down the road, we don't have any major complications of someone possibly closing the roadway and saying, "I'm sorry, this was never granted to the government" as a public easement to be able to upgrade this particular road access. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for that particular amendment to be inserted at this point in time, and then I do have another one.
Yes, I'll divide the amendment here. Okay, on the first amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, if there are any... Senator Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, and this is really, I have nothing, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the amendment. I just have a question that perhaps the move with the amendment might be able to answer. Or maybe even, the question would be basically exactly what has been done in terms of getting the quick claim deed or grant to Public Works. Does anybody know?
Madam Speaker, if I can yield to the sponsor of the legislation because she's more privy to the most recent information.
Senator Titigui?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I have no problem yielding to a question. In the research and the process we went through to ensure that everything is done correctly and the situation in which the good speaker before me had brought up, what is the process in order to obtain when the individual owners of their lots have an undivided interest involved in there? According to DPW, a quick claim would probably be the fastest and easiest way to able to, for the government to obtain this. Through the association of the Gilbaza subdivision, which they have been united for many years because of the situation that they went through litigation-wise, they have all met already and agreed to sign this quick claim deed. Now, the process happens through Department of Public Works. They send out a notification, a village meeting, or a meeting in that area, having all the quick claim deeds there, preparing the documents for them, letting them understand the situation, and having them sign for it. Now, according to Land Management, Land Management said there's actually no need for it because there is some type of access done through the process in which it was obtained. But we thought we would go a step further and to ensure, to make, you know, and not have any questions or doubts. So we decided to contact these individuals before going through with even the amendment. And that was to make sure we have all their signatures on. So we are going through that route through DPW in obtaining quick claim, even though Land Management says that it's not needed.
Senator Espaldon, does that answer your inquiry?
To a degree, but I'll take it for now. And it's important. I agree that while Land Management may have said that it's not necessary, I beg to differ on that, that there has to be a legal transfer of those property rights over to the government before the government can spend any money on that land. So I would have, I mean, given that, once the process happens, of course, that's when we can start building this road. And I would hope that it could be expedited as quickly as possible. So I have no objections to this amendment, and in fact, I do stand in support. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Senator Espaldon. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Uggins, would you like to close, or...
Just on that amendment, Madam Speaker, I just want to thank the previous speaker because I have the tendency to agree with him wholeheartedly in regards to at least allowing the process to proceed and allow the government direct access for this particular purpose because we're gonna be expending public resources. I think the challenge is that should this not be completed and realized where in fact the government would have public access, then the challenge would be others, in other jurisdictions throughout the island, saying, "You need to come in and do this." And then there would be a tremendous challenge in terms of the government of Guam carrying out such obligations. So, Madam Speaker, I thank him for sharing his perspective, and I certainly agree with him that public access really should be acquired prior to the commencement of this construction. Thank you.
On the motion, if there are no objections, motion carries. Senator Uggins, please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I think that in line with the amendment that was just adopted by our colleagues, and I want to thank our colleagues for allowing that to be considered and acted on. But in line with that, and in line with the intent of this particular legislation to ensure that the $800,000 goes directly towards this particular project until such time is completed, and that the $250,000 is used to remedy or upgrade existing, not private, but public small easements because they're presently being utilized at the Tri section. In line with that, I'd like to move, Madam Speaker, for the addition of a new Section 3 to the bill to read, "The funds identified herein shall be applied solely for the purposes set forth and shall not be subject to the transfer authority of Imago Laem Guahan." And that would allow for at least the assurance to the property owners, regardless as to whether it's the Gilbaza subdivision or the family members that reside at the Tri section area, that at least these resources will be dedicated towards those construction projects so that they can realize some upgrades in their adjacent roadways. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I ask our colleague for their consideration.
On that motion, are there anyone wishing? If not, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Senator Uggins, are you done? Okay, Senator Guthertz, you're recognized on the main motion. Okay, Senator Guthert, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I want to commend the author of this bill, Senator Telo Titegwe. She really has accomplished by just writing this bill a wonderful service to this community. And the message that she presents is that the people of Guam do care. We care about all of our brothers and sisters who make Guam their home. And we don't want them to be exploited, mistreated, or forgotten under any circumstances. That's your message, Senator, and that's a very powerful, strong message. This government has a habit of forgetting and not correcting problems in the community in a timely manner. Oftentimes, this is attributed to a lack of resources, which is true. We don't always have the monies that we need to make things better or to make things right. But government neglect or passivity creates hardships and hurts people. Government can only exist for one purpose, and that's to serve its constituents, all of its constituents. It can't pick and choose who it wants to serve. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, when governments forget that, that that's the reason why they were created and that's the reason why they exist, then people revolt against their government, sometimes in displays of civil disobedience and sometimes in displays that involve physical force. One of the biggest sins of this government has been to allow land to quote-unquote "be developed" but never in accordance with the existing laws that require infrastructure to be in place before the property can be sold. This bill is partly as a result of that terrible error in judgment in past governments, past leadership on the island. But that's no excuse for current leadership to allow this matter of neglect to continue. You know, I really don't care who owns that road. I want it to be paved. And I want those children, when they go to school, to feel good, to feel clean and to feel ready to learn in the classrooms and to be welcomed in their schools by their classmates and their teachers. And not to be embarrassed because they come to school wet because they're walking in the rain or they have mud in their shoes. To me, that's a sin. So I stand here in full support of what our senator is doing with this bill. I believe the amendment's a good amendment. But, Madam Speaker, I want to say this, that this legislature has to have more scrutiny over these matters that occur in the executive branch, matters of neglect. We need to have more oversight, more aggressiveness in our oversights of the departments and agencies of this government that don't do their job and give us all kinds of excuses. With reference to the road mitigation, another important action of this legislature, particularly the sponsoring senator, Senator Augen, and all of those here today that recognize what a travesty these road projects are in terms of their planning, their execution, and the respect of the planners and the administrators in Public Works for the people of this territory. They have messed up big time. They really have. And they're hurting people, they're hurting families, and they're hurting village communities so much that we have to find money to fix roads in the villages because of the lack of planning on the part of Public Works for these massive road projects. You know, if I was some of the villagers in Baragada, I would put up barriers and keep these cars out of my street. "No, you can't come down my street," especially these big, big trucks. These big trucks are going through the villages because they want to bypass Route 10, Route 16, Route 8, cement trucks, garbage trucks, delivery trucks. My goodness. If you lived on those streets, and some of you probably do, you can imagine what that does to you. It scares you, particularly if you have children like to play outside in front of the house. Or children walking home from school in the village streets and have to deal with this traffic diversion. I dare say, Madam Speaker, that this situation in fact dilutes the value of property in the villages that are impacted by this traffic diversion. I have already suggested to businesses that are affected by these construction projects on our roads to go down to the Attorney General's office and make a claim against the Gov Guam Claims Fund. Let's see what happens. In any community in the United States where businesses, small businesses are impacted by these kinds of road projects and the government doesn't have mitigation programs in place to work with them, they'll sue the government. And I sincerely believe they have a legitimate claim against the government of Guam because of poor planning for these road projects. And they should go down to the Attorney General's office and file a claim against the government of Guam. Let's see what happens. Because they have been impacted, they have been hurt, as you all know, on the verge of bankruptcy or closure because of these projects and the lack of planning. This is messed up. And of course, we're doing our best to try to help correct it. This bill is a great bill because it will help address some of those issues. And I commend the senator for finding the money to do it in the village streets. But it's not enough. Public Works, Madam Speaker, and those multimillion-dollar consultants getting over $11 million to so-called "plan and supervise" these massive road construction projects on Guam have to be held accountable. I want to know what we're paying them for. And I'm sure the people in Guam want to know too. We need more oversight hearings. Hopefully, we'll have some more on this. But again, I commend, for Senator Telo Titegwe, I want to commend her for her bill. I commend the senator, Senator Ben, for helping Telo verify the availability of funds. And I commend all of those here today, all of us here today, really, for recognizing the importance of this initiative to straighten out this road so these children can go to school and be like other children in our community and have bus services. You know what? By the way, I have a suggestion for Public Works. If you can't pick the children up in a school bus, then get a heavy-duty truck and go pick them up. Be creative. Get the National Guard to help. They have all kinds of vehicles that can traverse any muddy road, any bad roads. They can go in there and pick up those children. The governor can activate those trucks today. Send the National Guard to pick up those children until the road is paved. But I'm serious, Madam Speaker. There are ways to mitigate this. Just because a bus can't turn around... You know, we have armored vehicles, heavy vehicles that can go through anything with four-wheel drive capability to pick up the children. Come on. So I want to call on Governor Camacho, wherever he may be today. Felix, wherever you are, I hope you're hearing this. Please, send the National Guard to pick up the children at the Gilbaza subdivision and other subdivisions so they can go to school on time. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Senator Guthert, Senator Frank Blas, my brother, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of this legislation. I want to congratulate the author, main author, sponsor of this legislation for her diligence and her tenacity. Quite honestly, I've watched her over the last two weeks. Really, you know, the passion that she had, the perseverance, the will, and the collaboration. I think that this bill is the epitome of true bipartisan, nonpartisan relationships. It was a product and as a result of everybody that was working with the good senator on making sure that it's a product that can stand the test, a product that, once enacted, you can move forward without any question. There were many people that contributed to this. I think that she worked with the good chairman of three different committees. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's a product that she should be very proud of. That said, I'd like to be able to propose an amendment, actually. Actually, it's just so that we can make sure that it's clean. It's actually on page one, line four. It's actually making the written amount of the sum consistent with the amount of the parentheses, where it's supposed to be $1,500,000. It's $1,500,000. Okay, she, you know, I mean, if we had, had we not caught it, this lady, in her tenacity and her will and gun and everything, would have got $150,000 more that we wouldn't know how to spend. No, I didn't cut it. I made sure, it's not cutting anybody's. Everybody's thing, everybody's amounts are still intact. But, you know, I think there's been a lot said not only the, you know, the success of being able to put the bill together and tenacity, but the importance of the bill. You know, the $250,000 for the village of Baragada, I want to say, in behalf of my village, I want to say thank you. But also for the $800,000 to be able to build the access road with the amendments that have been proposed and have been included. You know, Madam Speaker, I want to, again, applaud the author. I want to applaud and I want to thank, commend all the collaborative work that went into putting this bill together. And with that, I encourage and I urge please all of my colleagues to overwhelmingly support this legislation. Thank you very much. But going back to my amendment, passed?
Yes, there's no... On the, okay, on the emotion for the $1,500,000, $1,500,000, on that emotion, on that motion, no objection, motion carries. And thank you very much to my bro, Senator Blas. If there are anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion, Senator Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there's definitely nothing wrong in the intent of this bill. I think the author definitely articulated the concern she had, the compassion she had for the people who live in this area and the following speakers as well, who said very well, basically, this is about taking care of our people. Once they're here on this island, they are our people. There are many times where we have put roads where there were no people, just for the sake of putting roads at times. And maybe to even just spur development in that area. But in all honesty, in all reality, there were no people living in that area. This is a different situation. We actually have people living in the area where the roads are vastly, are direly needed. So I definitely have to stand in support. The question I do have in my mind, and I will ask the author perhaps if she could shed a little light on the subject. And the question is, how far of a distance of pavement are we talking about? And this goes to the very issue of the previous amendment, right? Even though it was more of a syntax in terms of the wording of $1,500,000 and in parentheses, it's really $1,500,000. But knowing full well that we have actually $1.5 million or thereabouts that is available, the question then becomes, how much of a road do we need to lay? Because if, say for example, it's true that it takes about a million dollars to lay about a million dollars, a miles' worth of road, how much are we talking about? So if the author would please, would be willing to yield, then we'll know where the $800,000 is the appropriate amount.
Senator Titegwe, did you hear that question? Would you like to yield?
Yes, yes, I have, Madam Speaker, and not a problem. The distance between Route 3 and to the area in which the bus will have the ability to make its turnaround is approximately half a mile long.
Senator Espaldon?
I also, well, the following question then becomes, do we know how wide the easement is? Is it a 20 or 40-foot easement?
40-foot easement.
And the next question then becomes, how much does it cost per mile or half-mile for a 40-foot easement to be paved?
Okay, the total cost on this project, as I got from the director, our good director, Andy Leon Guerrero, as they did the assessment, including the surveying. So we had the surveying included in that along with first you grade the road, then you compact it, and then you lay the asphalt down. But we've also included in that the surveying. So I know that there's a certain amount of money. I don't have that money amount there, but I have it in aggregate, and that is $800,000.
Okay, and that satisfies my question. And I just wanted to make sure because again, if we were underappropriating, then again, we would probably face the same situation on certain sections of that road and we only fulfill half of our duty and our responsibility to the residents in this area. But I'll definitely take the word of the good author because I, and I also wanted to make sure everybody understands that the good author, Senator Titegwe, did do her homework on this. She, we know that for the past few months, she has been working very closely with the residents of the area. We know that she has walked that street with the students from that area. We know that she has talked with DPW, with Land Management, with the corresponding agencies to make sure that the amount is exactly what is needed to cover the cost of this road. And we also know that she has done, and she has put together this bill with the full compassion and the full understanding of the necessities of the residents of that part of our island. And for that, we definitely must commend her, and I stand in full support of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Buen puro, Senator, I mean, Senator Espaldon. Are there anyone, anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator... If not, Senator Tadekui, you may close.
Si dos masi, Madam Speaker, and dunkalu dunkalu si dos masi to my colleagues and those who spoke today on this bill. I must admit, it started off with our good speaker from Baragada, who actually started the tears coming to my eyes in what he said, and then ending up adding more to that was the good, my good colleague, Senator Guthert's there to continue the flow of tears. And I said I wasn't going to cry. I guess the whole time I've been here, I haven't really shed a tear, but today it came like a waterfall. And I'd like to thank them. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm not going to be too long on this. I just wanted to say that there was something that happened to make this happen that was so important. I spoke to some of the residents, Madam Speaker, and they said to me that an angel came to them, a guardian angel came to them, to their children, to their families. And that guardian angel was named Margarita Titanoe. And Margarita Titanoe had her other angel deputized as other guardian angels, as Mr. and Mrs. Santos, who are the really true people who are fighting for them, for this area and these children. And then, when she came to me, I guess I can say it now, she came to me and told it to tell her. And expect results. Ta-da-ta. Okay, I just had to. But I made sure it got done, because it was so worthy of it. It was, it was needed. And nothing could have happened unless the guardian angel came to me to help me through this, and that was the most important thing, the funding. If it wasn't for Andy Leon Guerrero, the director of D P W, I couldn't have made this And now, ladies and gentlemen, I, my colleagues, you are also added to those guardian angels that those children so desperately need. You are now all their guardian angels. Madam Speaker, I ask that this bill be moved to the third reading file.
Are there any objections? Without objections, motion carries, it's down to the voting file. Next on the agenda, if I may, 479. We'll go ahead and entertain Bill Number 479. I believe Senator Augen, you're recognized on Bill 479.
Thank you very much. Buenas tardes, Madam Speaker, dunkalu si dos masi. We do have Bill Number 479, this trio substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary. And Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for this particular proposal to be placed on the voting file, please.
Without, are there any objections? Without, would you like to speak on?
Yes, please, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I proceed, I'd like to move that the good chair of finance, who has been very supportive in terms of trying to identify funding sources for this particular provision, Speaker Panglinen be incorporated as the next sponsor of the legislation before I continue with my comments, please, Madam Speaker.
Without objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And this is just for the information of the general public. This is an act to expand the borrowing ability of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority by including the authorization to also enter into revolving loan funds and direct loans by amending the appropriate sections in the code. And Madam Speaker, just to provide a little bit of history, if you recall back in August, and if by any chance I speak here a little bit too quickly, you can ask me to slow down a bit, but, Madam Speaker, I understand that you keep looking at the clock, so I'm going to try to expedite this as quickly as possible. But, you know, Madam Speaker, back in August, we had passed legislation that would authorize a set aside of up to a million dollars a year out of the Healthy Futures Fund that would be directed over to Guam Memorial Hospital specifically to be utilized as an annualized funding source for paying a debt service for the line of credit. Well, incidentally, after the passage of that legislation, G M H, in conjunction, working in conjunction with the Guam Economic Development Authority, had proceeded to go out into the market and see if by any chance any financial institution would provide a line of credit as authorized by that legislation. Well, incidentally, they went out twice to the market, and both instances, the only responses that they received were proposals for either a direct loan or a revolving loan fund. And it was not in line with the R F P, which required and only authorized a line of credit. So that's why we are here today, Madam Speaker, to be able to look at providing Guam Memorial Hospital, we all know, and it was highlighted in print media just in the last few days, that G M H continues to feel, to experience some financial challenges with meeting their operational obligations. And that financial challenge now has added up to anywhere between 12 to 16 million dollars. And what this proposal would do is give them that expanded authority to be able to not only go out and pursue a line of credit, but also to insert the option of being able to acquire a revolving loan fund or a direct loan. Just for the information of the body, Madam Speaker, the previous authorization authorized G M H to go out and acquire up to 12 million dollars. Well, this proposal would increase that borrowing authorization up to 25, based on the response and the request of representatives from Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. And then, the form or the actual funding source for the repayment will continue to be the million-dollar set aside out of the Healthy Futures Fund, and then, should G M H need additional resources, it would have to incorporate its own revenues into this equation. So, for example, if they go out and a request is granted that they can only acquire up to 15 million dollars in a revolving loan fund based on the million-dollar annualized payment, then that's the maximum that they can borrow as authorized by the set aside of the Healthy Futures Fund revenues. But if G M H is able, and the board of trustees is able to agree to identify some internal financing sources or revenues, then they can obviously increase that borrowing authority up to the maximum of 25 million dollars, and also with an amortized maximum timeframe of 25 years. There's also another provision here, Madam Speaker, that traditionally, anytime that the government of Guam is going out to either the bond market or to a trust account or to a banking institution on Guam, there's one provision that many instances, at least it was two or three separate instances, where in fact, that proposal had to come back to this body, and the good chair of finance had to insert a language that read, "The government of Guam hereby waives immunity from any suit or action in contract upon the loan and guarantee" only for that financial institution. It does not waive immunity for liability for the elected or appointed officials who are acting at the behest of the, in the capacity as a representative of the government of Guam. So that was also requested, that that provision be inserted in there. And if you look at the authorization, it's primarily for banking or financial institutions that do business on Guam. So there are certain safeguards here to ensure that, that at least to the greatest extent possible, that our banking institutions on island are the direct recipients and beneficiaries in terms of entering into arrangement as it applies to G M H. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of the members of this body to please approve or support this legislation so that we can provide G M H with some financial relief that they are in dire need of, so that they can continue to provide the best services that they can within the limited financial capabilities or capacities that they presently are faced with. So I ask our colleagues for their consideration. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Si dos masi, Senator Augen. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the bill? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized on the main motion.
Si dos masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to rise in support of this legislation and commend the efforts of my colleague for doing what is necessary and what it takes to give the Guam Memorial Hospital the needed resources to deliver quality medical services to our community. And we have seen efforts by this body, by different members of the body, including, of course, our good chair of the Committee on Health and other members, to find opportunities and ways in which we can structure programs and systems and mechanisms within our government to ensure that when the Guam Memorial Hospital needs to access the financial capital to get resources, that it has the capability and the legal authority to do so. And to a large extent, that's really all we can, other than continue to give them money and subsidies. It's, let's find a way for them to help themselves. And I think that that will lead to a better situation that we have than if all we did was continue to pour money in there and without giving them any kind of opportunity to structure programs that would allow them some flexibility, and of course, a solution that encompasses more than just, we're going to get some money, we're going to make this payment, and that's the end of it, and if we don't get any more, we can't do any more. I think what this does is, it allows and provides that base of support that is continuing, that the Guam Memorial Hospital can count on, that the hospital can structure its financial obligations and its financial resources that would allow it to tie itself over and help itself. Because if all we do is just continually pour money up there without any kind of other opportunities for them to dig themselves out of the financial hole, then we're never going to get any better, and that the progress that is made at Guam Memorial Hospital will continue to rescind and ebb, and it just won't get better. And I think that, over the years, they have concentrated their efforts on the accreditation process, have maximized the resources that they've been able to receive from the federal government and from support out of this legislative body and providing it the resource through borrowings that this body has undertaken, support the repayment off from the general fund, and even given the proceeds to make the capital improvement, the investment in its fiscal infrastructure. And what this bill does now is, it gives it the investment in its fiscal infrastructure, the financial processes and the financial systems up there, and gives guaranteed resource and support from the general fund through the Healthy Futures Fund that allows the financial managers at Guam Memorial Hospital to structure more long-term relief without needing just a whole bunch of money upfront and we're done with it. What it does also is, it gives us an opportunity to continue to be involved with them, to work with them, to reevaluate and reassess the resource that's there and the structure that they've put in place, and we can then make any additional changes as we need to, as we move down the road towards greater financial viability of that hospital and accessing financial resources to continue to improve the quality of care that is given to our community. And so I thank the good author, Senator B J Cruz, of course, for making the amendment that would, that had increased the Healthy Futures Funds collection and setting aside a portion of that in conjunction with our good chair to give them that long-term support. And that really is what is needed. It needs some kind of predictability on its financial resource in order to predict the resources that it needs and structure access to those resources. So I think it's a good solution all around. It's an evolution of solutions that have been put in place in the last couple of years, and it's not going to be the last one, because as this community grows, as science and technology change, and we may have to make those investments, we have to recruit additional people with the more specific and special skills needed to run the advanced technology that we will access as part of our investment in healthcare in this community, we'll need to do some more. But we are prepared to do that. But at this time, this is, this bill gives the Guam Financial Hospital, I mean, the Guam Memorial Hospital, the predictable resource that is, that it can count on on a yearly basis to structure a financial support mechanism to ensure that it gets its financing and access to the resource in order to pay its vendors, make its payments for the purchase of supplies and equipment and other obligations that will continue to keep the hospital running and make, and give it the resources to improve and continually add on to the services that are being rendered to the people of Guam. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And si dos masi, I ask my colleagues for their consideration of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the main motion, are there any others who would like to speak on? Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in full support of this legislation, and I want to applaud the author of this legislation for his continued diligence and his continued work in being able to provide and to help improve the financial stability for the hospital. You know, I think that we can all agree that basically, over the last three years, with the collaboration of everybody that's here, and I also want to, I think that kudos, he was very humble at this thing, but I think the kudos should also go over the good chairman and the good chairman on finance and colleague from Baragada in his assistance in not only this legislation, but other legislations that have been, that have been passed by this body previously that has helped the Guam Memorial Hospital attain the tools that were, that are necessary for them to gain that financial autonomy and to gain that flexibility with their finances to be able to improve themselves. So, you know, there are a lot of kudos and a lot of things that have to go off, you know, that have to be said. This is, this is a testament to the hospital's maturity in its organization, along with the accreditation that it currently has and it currently recently attained, not just for the services that they provide, but for continuing to be able to provide those services. I think it's no secret that, you know, right now, as, even as we speak, that the hospital still continues to find ways to be able to pay down its vendors, and it still has some ways to go. This legislation, excuse me, helps the hospital in being able to utilize the resources that could be made available to them to be able to make those payments possible, but also, more importantly, is to continue to provide that and those necessary emergency medical services that our people need. This is, you know, you and I could get into an argument with regards to this when it comes to, between education and healthcare, but I don't think that anybody, I don't think this community can afford for the hospital to be closed down for one minute. And in order for that to continue to, the hospital to continue to survive and sustain itself, we're giving the hospital through this legislation the added flexibility of being able to use those resources. So, again, I want to applaud the author of this legislation, and I ask my colleagues as well for their support in this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Si dos masi, Senator Blas, on the motion. Anybody else? Then I'm going to ask the author if you would like to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and si dos masi to the chair of finance and also the former chair of health, the health committee, for their comments in terms of reinforcing our support for G M H. You know, Madam Speaker, first of all, before I close with my comments, because the good senator from Mangillo's last Chalapago is now looking at me, and she's saying, can you please expedite your comments? Can I move that the former chair of health, my primus Senator Frank Blas Jr., be incorporated as the third name on the list, please, if I may? And then, Senator Judy Guthers as the fourth? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and then, and the good senator from Chalapago now, her adopted village, as number five, please. Thank you, Madam Speaker, if there's no objection.
On that motion then, to make Blas third, Guthers fourth, and Barnes fifth, without any objections, so.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there's a couple of things that I want to close with in terms of what the committee and also in conjunction with this body has provided GMH over the course of just a short two years. Eleven million dollars was provided in 2009 in July, of which that would be utilized, and it's presently in an RFP form and the contract is being formulated, where it would expand the emergency room, the physical facility, by four thousand square feet additional to accommodate the increasing demand over the emergency room. But also part of that eleven million dollars has been set aside to add and to expand the intensive care unit and additional three or four beds. So that would address only our requirements today. What this would provide is an operational funding source. And I think that I need to highlight, Madam Speaker, that the challenges really lie ahead in terms of this military buildup, in terms of the increase in population, because one of your proposals, Madam Speaker, is to build a wing to accommodate a women's needs as well as children. And I think that that already, that concept has already been accepted by management and many of the supervisors over at GMH, and they're working in that particular direction. They're conducting a feasibility physical assessment in terms of what the needs are going to be over the next five to 10 years. So there are some things that are taking place, and this would provide an immediate financial relief, but it's not the fix-all. And I think our people need to get that assurance that yes, this body has contributed in the expansion of the emergency room, this body has contributed in the expansion, impending expansion of the intensive care unit, also with the passage of this, with the support of all of our colleagues, will provide some financial resources for operational relief. But there's still a tremendous challenge down the road in terms of expanding the facilities and better accommodating the anticipated increase in population, regardless as to whether it's organic growth or whether it deals directly with the military buildup. And that's really where the committee eventually would leave in this body in terms of how we've been able to provide the direct support. And I want to commend you, Madam Speaker, and the Chair of Finance and all of the members of this body, because every single time that I have stepped forward and asked for the consideration and the support for our one and only public hospital facility, the support has been more than magnanimous and unanimous also. So I want to thank all of our colleagues here, and I thank you, and I request your consideration and your support of this legislation so that we can allow GMH to proceed with their financial requirements. Thank you, and Sidus Massey.
So on the motion then, that's to send 479 to third reading file, without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, next bill, 453.
The next bill is...
456.
453. Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 453-30COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Flexation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be placed in the third reading file.
And you would like to discuss it?
Yes, very briefly.
And they proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 453-30 would be an act to approve the official zoning map, F367-S52, more commonly known as the Dos Atmontes Planning Area and its related zone amendments. Very briefly, Madam Speaker, as we all know and familiar with, when properties were excessed by the federal government, during the tenure of ownership of the federal government of these properties, the properties and the lands were not subject to any of the zoning regulations of the local government. Therefore, there were no zoning designations governing the land use of those properties, and the properties were used by the military for whatever the purpose would suit their mission. During the sessions of Congress, Congressman Underwood was able to get legislation passed which determined that, that upon the determination of properties held by the military and the Department of Defense on Guam, after a survey and were determined to be excess to the needs of the military on Guam, these properties were declared excess, surveyed, and transferred to the government of Guam. In addition, there were properties that were excess to the military's needs through the BRAC base closure process, in which some of the military bases and installations actually were downsized, closed, and again, the properties were declared excess to the needs of the military and then transferred to the government of Guam. Upon the transfer of these lands to the government of Guam, the government of Guam passed a policy that said that all of these military formerly-held Defense Department and federal government lands that have been returned to the government of Guam shall be returned to the original landowners to the greatest extent possible. And some of these properties then, and the mechanism for transferring this was through the Ancestral Lands Commission that was set up to receive these properties, accept the claims of the original landowners on these properties, perfect the title, and then transfer and quitclaim deed, the interest of the government of Guam in these lands now back to the original landowner, if they're still alive, and to their estates, should the original landowner be deceased. And so we started that process several years ago, and now these properties are back in the hands of the original landowners after returned by the Ancestral Lands Commission. Now, one thing that did not change, along with this ownership, is that the properties continue to receive, to have no zoning designation, and therefore, but now are subject to the local government with regards to the land, authorized land use zone, land use pursuant to the land zoning mechanism adopted by the government of Guam. So most of these government lands, or formerly-held government lands transferred back are now in the hands of private landowners with no zoning designation. And the statutes in the government of Guam have indicated that the property with no zoning designation can only be zoned by the legislature or through a process at the Guam Ancestral Lands Use Commission. And in order to facilitate getting these properties to economical use by the landowners now, the legislature has in the past enacted piecemeal legislation that assigned a zone, zoning designation to these properties through legislation. And we've continually done that on a, on a case-by-case basis. Well, one of the largest tracts of lands to be returned to the original landowners is what is commonly referred as the Dos Atmontes Planning Area, which is to the right of the road that goes to the Two Lovers Point. To the left, we have commonly what is recalled as the Harmon Cliff Liven area. To the right, between that and Route 3, is what's commonly referred as the Dos Atmontes Areas. And so all of these properties are now in private hands with no zoning designation. And rather than doing one, each property owner on a, on a case-by-case basis and developing a hodgepodge of use there that has the potential for clutter and chaos, the Guam Land Use Commission developed a process in which it looked at these properties, developed a land use zoning designation plan for these properties, and assigned zoning designations for each of these properties in that large area. It then gave the landowners one year to come in, take a look at what the zoning designation is, agree to either accept it or request for a change. That one year passed, the property, I mean, the maps now were developed with the zoning changes and some requested changes, and then it was transmitted to the governor and transmitted to this legislative body to approve the zoning map itself. And so, when, when the Committee on Land received a referral from the governor, from your office, as being transmitted by the governor pursuant to the standing rules of the legislature, we found out when we had a public hearing that most of the landowners and the heirs of the landowners, of the original landowners, had not been aware of this one year timeframe. Now, we say, oh, but they all had a year. Well, regardless of whether they had a year or 10 years, when we actually made the announcements and these landowners came down to see what was happening here, they basically said, we weren't consulted, we didn't know what happened. In addition to that, there was some question with regards to the zoning properties and some of the lots in that zoning, in that zoning area. And so what we did at the, at the Committee on Lands, Madam Speaker, is we actually took all of the registered landowners plus the administrators of the estate of all of the properties in this area and sent individual letters out to them and said, we are in the process of reviewing the zoning map and the zoning designations for your property pursuant to that process adopted by the Guam Land Use Commission. And we're asking you if you agree with this zoning designation, or is there another zoning designation that you would like to have? And we provided them that same opportunity of coming in, reviewing it, and making changes. We did that twice. So we sent letters out, we had a hearing, we sent, we had a, we sent a second round of letters after our hearing to ensure once again that everyone was contacted. So during the public hearing, we actually had individuals who had not been aware, either they were off island or for whatever reason, come in and say, and requested that their zone designation assigned by the Guam Land Use Commission be changed, be upgraded to a different zone. And what we did was when we, when we received those zone requests, designation changes pursuant to the public hearings that we held, we transmitted that request back to the Department of Land Management and the planners there and said, these landowners are now requesting a change in their zone from what was originally assigned under the Guam Land Use Commission process. Is this still compatible? Is this still, would this still allow an orderly development of the property and that area while giving the landowner maximum economic use of their property? And in almost all the cases, really, there were no objections voiced by the planners at the Department of Land Management, and they agreed to these requested changes. So what this bill does is then it adopts the maps that were given to us by the Guam Land Use Commission and the zoning designations assigned, and then it amends the zoning designations for certain properties that are listed in Section 2, in which the landowners had come in, reviewed it, and requested for a change in their land zoning. So for example, in Section 2, the owners of Lot 5033 requested that their zone designation be changed from R2 to commercial. And this enactment of this statute would then change the Guam Land Use adopted zoning map where that was designated R2 to now C. And so, the, the lots that are being changed pursuant to the process that was undertaken by the Committee on Lands are these lots of 5034, A through Lot Number P. There is a property that is directly across this land zoning area, adjacent to property that had been rezoned by this legislative body in the past, that was a zoning, original landowner returned, that was sold, and this body rezoned those properties. But because this one property, which is Lot 5311REM, is on, across Route 3, it's not really part of the Dos Atmontes Area, but it actually is adjacent to property that had been rezoned pursuant to land returns. And so that property is, is being assigned, a commercial zone property. It's right along the Route 3 area, right, a little bit further up from the Okudu High School entrance, and it's the front part of that, which is fronting Route 3, and it's just on the other side of Route 3 from the Dos Atmontes Planning Area. And so that's why it's, it's in a section all by itself and not part of the Dos Atmontes Planning Area. And so, Madam Speaker, in a nutshell, that's what this is. Once again, the zoning map only assigns the designation of the zoning which governs the land use plan. The zoning map and the approval by this body does not attest to the size of the property, the configuration of the property, the reservations for any easements in that area pursuant to the return of these properties by the military to the government of Guam and the reservations that were made as part of that deed. It only assigns the land use designation of that property, which allows these landowners to move forward in the subdivision of their property, in the sale of their property, if it's that what, how they want to treat that asset, or in the development of that property, and of course, the land use designation is required in order to develop that property. So I do want to say, we, we actually did some very thorough contact with all of the landowners, and we're very confident that we were able to reach all of the estates and had informed them of this process, and all have had an opportunity to participate. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I ask for my colleagues' consideration.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. On the motion, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This process that the preceding speaker had spoken about was certainly a long time coming because I believe this effort has been underway for, gosh, I think this is the sixth year that they've been trying, they actually did the tabletop exercise, mapping it out and all that stuff, and, and so it's been a long time coming. Now, so as I understand it, you know, basically the process that was done would help the landowners there in getting the, I guess, the, the maps, at least in the map that, in a separate map, kind of, kind of measuring out where the properties are at and all that. So that was one, one challenge that needed to be taken care of, and apparently the Territorial Land Use Commission had taken care of that. The other challenge was that, I guess, with many of these returned lands, as the preceding speaker had explained, was that it was returned and it did not have any zoning to it. It was later found that actually the Territorial Land Use Commission has the authority to designate that initial zoning, but hadn't done so in a, for a long time because it didn't have the quorum to be able to come together to, to actually undertake that task. And then finally got over that hurdle, and, and now we are here today. And then the process that the preceding senator had carried out as a chairman was then to provide the landowners, basically, that final opportunity to come in and say, well, you know, there, we got to correct this inconsistency because the lot which I own, which that, which an individual owns across the street may be zone commercial, but this, but the other part of his lot on the other side of the street is zone residential, so what the bill does in some of these things is it raise, it upgrades the zoning from, let's say, R2 to commercial. I do have a question, and if the author would yield, I would like, I would ask that, maybe if he can help to clarify. Now, in most of these here, Lot 503, 5034, for example, we're, we're upgrading the zoning from R2 to commercial, and, and in previous legislative actions that the board, the legislature has taken, we have actually done where a lot was zoned from, we did a legislative rezoning from R2 to commercial. There was some cases, however, for example, a good example on Route 15, there was a piece of property back there in a similar situation where I guess it needed to have... of property back there in a similar situation where I guess it needed to have, it was returned lands, it needed to have a zone designation put to it, it was requested, I, I think either that or, but it was, it was, there was a request made to upgrade the zoning, I believe, from either agriculture to M1. And the legislative body did not agree to that, was, but it was agreeable to upgrading the zoning from agriculture or from R2, whatever it was, up to as high as commercial. But then, anything further than that, the body felt that it, really, the matter should go to the Territorial Land Use Commission for full, you know, for further review, and in fact, determine whether it was appropriate. Now, I noticed that here, there are several lots, Lot 5031, you'll see there on Line 11, it's to upgrade it from R2 to M1, the same thing, 5031, 5032. And so, my question then is, for the sake of consistency, this body has never grant, at least, the recent ones that we've done, there was strong objection to rezoning, doing a legislative rezoning up to an M level, with the far, the highest we went was a C-zone. So, I would just ask, then, please help me to understand why, if we're going to be consistent, why is it, how is it consistent by doing a legislative rezoning here to an M1 when in the past that was always objected to?
Senator, do you, you to the question?
Of course, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I could just be more precise then on the, the one case he pointed out, the bill actually designated a C-zone for that property when it was introduced, and it was amended on the floor to go from, with no designation at the beginning, to go from C to R, to, I mean, from C to M1. I objected to that, and I think members of this body objected to that, but I think the reason why is the surrounding areas there are already zoned. And so, to go from no zone to an M1 zone, and some of the other surrounding areas, while there were M1 zone across the street, down the street from that was the property to foot with the Guam Community College that is going to be a school campus. Up the street was some houses and residential areas, and across, and next to it was some C-zone. So, there's existing land use designations that are different from the M1 that would have impacted those areas should it go straight to an M1 with a R1 lot, you know, 100, 300 feet away. That impacts that with the Guam Community College campus, future campus site possibly, down the street, and so forth. So, to, to go from zero to M1, that, that was my rationale. I don't, I don't know if anybody else objected, but that was my rationale, that there's existing designations area, in those areas, that we need, I wanted to ensure that those surrounding property owners got a chance to comment on putting that M1, because when the public hearing was held, the public hearing was held for a C-zone, not an M1 zone. And so, by changing that on the floor, those landowners that may have objected to an M1 zone, but didn't to a C, never got that chance. Now, what, the reason why this is being done in this fashion is, we're starting with all of the properties in that area with zero zone designations. So, to go from an R2, which has no development at this time, to a C is compatible, and then everybody, all the surrounding land areas know at the beginning what it is. So, there's no development yet. When they start to develop, they will know that their prop, that the property next to them is an M1, or the property next to them is a C, or the property down the street 300, 500 feet away is an R2. So, all the development would start brand-new, and so, there are no existing use developments there that are, would be incompatible to moving it to a C-zone, going from an R2 to a C, or a C to an M1. And then, and there are now adjacent lots. So, when we move one from a C to an M1, and the person across the street moves from a C to an M1, they're both compatible uses when they start their development. So, the opportunity for incompatible uses is greatly diminished having started from brand-new and from this planning zone, zoning area. And that is the reason why, I think, we, we addressed it in this fashion, we checked with the land use planners, added at, for input, and also, the different government of Guam agencies for the input in terms of what the uses would be and how they would affect surrounding landowners. And the, they were, the upgrades in zoning, as, as we outlined here, and as being called for approval in here, were reviewed by this process of having these land use planners develop that zoning. So, for the record, there's two properties across the street from this that started from, from A, I mean, from zero zoning because they were returned lands, and this legislative body passed and zoned them M1. I voted no on both of those rezonings because it started at zero, and down the street you had agricultural zones, behind it you had agricultural zones. And so, there's existing surrounding properties that already had zone designations that, in my opinion, putting an M1 in the middle of an A-zone, in which there are existing farms and existing homes, would be incompatible at the, at the onset. So, that's why I voted no on those. But here, everything that's being changed is in, in one large area with no development at this time, and the, the beginning of the development, each landowners would know what the surrounding properties are going to be, and that development can proceed that may be more compatible and will not impact the surrounding residents in, in that fashion of existing land use plans in that area. So, that's the reason why this was approached in this manner.
Centretta, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I, I think the, the author of the bill certainly did a good job of explaining that. I wish I had the benefit of actually seeing a map so I can see this, you know, this surrounding lots here and there, and that, in fact, we have an M-zone here, and so, we're just making this lot here compatible. It'd be a lot easier for me to see it on a map as opposed to the waving of the hand in the air. So, I, I would ask the author if he could provide us that.
We, we will bring the map, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much.
And so, I appreciate that. But, you know, notwithstanding that, and I, I trust that we will be able to see that, see that map before actually we, we vote on the bill, I, I certainly commend the author for taking finally this Dos Amontes issue to its finality here, so that, in fact, I believe that land had sat for about over 10 years from the time that the government had actually received it back from the federal government. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was even longer. And finally, it's, it's, it's finally being, going back to the hands of the landowners and in a way that they are better now able to work with the property. So, from that standpoint, I think it's a good bill, and I would still like to see the map. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Centretta, on the motion, Senator Guthers.
You know, I guess we've sort of come full circle, Madam Speaker, on the Dos Amontes land area. And I remember a little over two years ago, as a new senator, this was the first bill I worked on and introduced, and really worked hard on it, and like Ben, worked, met with the landowners repeatedly, officials of the government and land management, et cetera, to try to find a way to expedite this zoning in a way that would meet the needs of the landowners and the future plans that they may have to develop their land. Because as was noted, the land was never zoned, and they could not use their land. We ran into a problem on the floor of the legislature, and Ben will recall this, I think, Senator Ben, where there were some questions about the map, the accuracy of the map. And so, we pulled the bill back, and shortly thereafter, I, I remember meeting with Senator Panglinen and suggesting that, you know, this might be something that he would want to do under his land committee, as the new chairman of the land committee. And I forwarded, forwarded to him all the materials that I had from beginning to end. And, and I'm really very happy that Ben, Senator Ben's been very successful in moving this forward. I have to say, it was a very hard, hard subject to deal with. You know, perhaps my idealism and sometimes my naivety motivated me to want to help the landowners and finally get this matter resolved, but there were stumbling blocks, and some of the stumbling blocks were, I guess, some of the landowners had concerns about, as Ben said, adjacent lands being zoned differently than their land. And then, there were issues of who really owned the land, and who had the right to claim the land, and I, just so many peculiarities developed. And I learned quickly that this is a very, very difficult subject, the subject of land, the return of land, the zoning of land, the determination of who really owns the land, who has a right to the land, et cetera, et cetera. So, I recognize that this is something that required a little more experience, and I think that the chairman, our good chairman, Senator Panglinen, was the right person to move this forward. I want to commend him for this. This land is very important land on the island. This is wonderful property, has great potential. And when I was interested in the Dos Amontes area, Madam Speaker, it simply was to ensure that the landowners were able to develop and use their land in the west, best way possible for them. And I think with this new approach contained in the bill, that that finally is going to happen. And I'm hopeful that these landowners will protect their land and not be enticed to see their land lost or devalued in any way. And this process is intended to help them so that doesn't happen. If the chairman doesn't mind, I would be very honored if he would allow me to be a co-sponsor. Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Is that, is that a motion, Senator Guthers? On that motion, without objection, motion carries. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Senator Respecho, you're recognized on the, okay. If not, no others, Senator Ben, would you like to close? Okay. If there's no objection, to move it to the voting file? No objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill 372. Senator Respecho, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Although I'm not the author of Bill 372-30, I'm very honored to move this bill on behalf of the sponsor, Vice Speaker Cruz. At this time, I move that Bill 372-30 as substitute on the floor, be placed in the voting file with some brief discussion.
Without objection, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's been no secret or no surprise as to why the author of the bill would move forward on a piece of legislation that would require clerical personnel of churches or other religious organizations to report any crimes committed against children. Crimes in particular is the reporting of suspected child abuse. Under, in the current subsection of the current law, it lists a whole slew of positions or, or professions that are required to make these reports. And what this bill would do would expand it to include clergy member of any religious faith or other similar functionary, or employee of any church, place of worship, or other religious organization whose primary duties consist of teaching, spreading the faith, church governance, supervision of a religious order, or supervision or participation in religious ritual or worship. And although individuals who will now be required under this mandate have said that the current law already requires them to do so, I think what the author's trying to do is just make it perfectly clear. But I ask that I be the one to move this bill to the voting file and to speak in support of it to raise an even bigger question before this body. Madam Speaker, as you know, Speaker Wampad, over the last two nights, have held a series of oversight hearings regarding the Department of Education and the whole issue of bullying. I know that the author of this bill is wanting to make sure that clergy persons report these kinds of suspected abuses, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying tonight is that we should be even more concerned and more alarmed that employees of the Department of Education are not making this very reports. As we know, last night, we've asked, you've asked, Senator Tony Addas asked, the speaker has asked, every single panel member last night has asked if it's standard procedures for, for these employees to report these suspected child abuse cases, which also includes harassing, sexual harassment. And the responses we got was, "Well, we do our own investigation, and we really don't automatically report those to GPD or CPS," which they're required to by law. So, when we told them what the current law is, they were kind of dumbfounded. When I got home last night, right after the speaker adjourned the hearing, I got an email about 1:10 in the morning from, from an employee at DOE who works at a certain high school. And she said that, basically, that our assessment and our interpretation of the law is inaccurate. She said that what they're only required to report is when the perpetrator is their, that child's parent, when the alleged perpetrator is the parent of that child. And so, the whole reason for making these reports to GPD or CPS is to remove that child out of that harmful environment. Immediately, I responded to her email, I CC'd our legal counsel, who, who I've asked her to advise us to whether or not our interpretation is correct. And by 6:40 in the morning, our legislative counsel replied, saying that we are correct, Madam Speaker, that, that the law, the current law does not, does not speak to who the alleged perpetrator is, or does not even speak to whether or not that child is already in a harmful environment. And so, I thought that it would be a big opportunity, and the timing of it all, that Bill 372 is on the agenda, I thought it would be an even bigger opportunity to write a letter to Director Nerissa Underwood, to advise her of what the current law is, and to advise her how they're, how they're circumventing or ignoring what their statutory requirements are. And so, I want to rise to commend the author of the bill, who, as we know, has been off-island, tending to his 94-year-old mother, and we continue to pray for her, and we continue to, to, to stand in for, for our good vice speaker, to advance some of the very things that he likes, he wants to do in this session hall and in our work as senators. And so, so, as we are addressing Bill 372 and making it perfectly clear that when, when people make a confession to a priest, if that confession in any way requires the authorities to get involved, that the priest must not withhold that information, and that's what this bill is. And so, we've, we've, we've amended it to make it general, that any individual, any clergy member of any religious faith, not pointing out one faith over the other, but just making it a very general requirement that these people in this category must make these reports. But I want to say that in, in addressing Bill 372, it kind of gives the legislature an opportunity to remind the folks at the Department of Education, and what we've even done is asked the DOE to get together with the Attorney General's Office and CPS to do a system-wide reorientation to advise those employees of what their responsibilities are under this current statute. So, I rise in support of this bill, and again, on behalf of the mover of the legislation, Senator Cruz, I want to thank him for him, his consistency, his persistence in wanting to bring these issues to the forefront, regardless of the kind of stigma or the kind of controversies that, that come with doing these very things. So, I ask all of our colleagues to support this bill, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly on it.
Senator Respecho, anybody wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, would we move it down, on the motion to move it down to the voting file? Without objection, motion carries. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 401. Senator Respecho, could you, could you move that, please, on behalf of the speaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved that Bill 401 be placed on the voting file, and I know that this is a bill that's been in committee for some time now, and you are the co-sponsor, and it's an act to add a new section. And it's an act to add a new section to transfer of property under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam, to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So I know automatically that you'd want to recognize the Oversight Chair, Speaker Panglinen, for his work to have the public hearing, for his work to meet with both the port and families who stand to benefit from receiving this returned property, but more importantly, to have the legislature be consistent, to make that statement that any time property was taken from the original landowner, and any time that it's returned, either by the federal government or the local government, the policy of this government, of this legislature in particular, has been to try to get those lands returned to the original landowners, and that's exactly what's reflected in Bill 401-30.
Thank you, Senator Respechel. Anybody on the motion? Senator Panglinen, you rec, Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 401 is really a part of a trifecta of bills, 402 and 403, in which the Comunion Lands held a hearing that was proposed, of course, by yourself and Speaker Wampat, and we had already done one bill earlier, in terms of taking property that was returned to the government of Guam, that from the hearing that we conducted, the property was transferred to the Port Authority of Guam, and in the development of the master plan of the Port Authority of Guam, they had, in their master plan, developed, assigned these properties, I think in some instances, just open space, and would not have been suitable, maybe even, in some cases, not suitable for development of port function because of the nature of the property. And so, based upon the testimony, the, the port, of course, is concerned that the transfer of the property to the Port Authority of Guam contained a provision of a reversionary clause, but almost all of the returned lands have that provision. But I think these individuals are even in a better perspective, or in a better situation, because in the development of the port plan, the, if the property, if the development, if the port master plan reflects excess property or property that's not going to be developed, that, that the reversionary clause basically gets wiped, and wiped away, that, that the property restrictions in the transfer would not apply. And there was a, during the hearing on the first bill for the return of these properties, when that was noted, we, I had asked the Deputy Administrator of the Port at that time, if they could amend the port master plan to reflect that the port has no objections to the return of these properties, they were not going to be part of the development for future port use, and have that plan approved by the Secretary of the Navy. And we were able to, the port actually, true to its commitment at that hearing, did begin the process of communicating with the Secretary of the Navy, updating their master plan, informing the, the plant, the Secretary of the Navy and, of that plan, and that was accepted. So it actually then clears any kind of hurdle with regards to the return of these lands, and we were able to secure that letter from the Port Authority of Guam. So 401, 402, and 403 are separate parcels, and the reason why they're broken up is that there's a provision that when, any measure that comes before the body for the purpose of selling or alienating public lands, that they be considered on an individual basis and a single subject matter, and they can't be a conglomerate of different lots when it's for the purpose of, of selling or conveying public lands. So that's why they're all in separate pieces of legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Are there anyone? Senator Adda?
Again, Madam Speaker, I, you know, I, I wish I had the benefit of the map, and the reason why is because I know that in an earlier explanation about why was, why certain plots of, parcels of land were being upgraded from commercial to M1, or from residential to M1, it was, the rationale was because the surrounding parcels of land were already either M1, which then made that zoning compatible. And, and I asked that, I asked then, so where are these parcels at? Simply because I know, for example, that I believe, and again, I don't know where this is at, but I do know, for example, that down there, the old, by going into Polaris Point on the left-hand side, that, I believe that's property right now that's in the hands of the Ancestral Lands Commission. And I know that there's a, there's a company that's, that's pursuing to be able to lease that, but they're going to need to get it zoned M1, because they're going to use it actually as a satellite container yard. And so if that's the case, and we already know that that's coming down, and if any of these lots are adjacent to that, then, you know, it's kind of like, do we wait until that one is M1, and then the owner is going to come in later and say, well, you know, we want to also optimize the use of our property? So I, I just need to see on the map, where is this property? Because if it's way, way away from it, then, you know...
The Yonka Earl property.
Yeah, so, so Madam Speaker, I just asked, I really would like to have the benefit of looking at where these maps are, or where these parcels are, by looking on the map itself, and then I'll be in a better position to be able to, to make a decision on, on how to vote for the bill.
Senator, on that, on that note, I will just let you know for the record that we do have the map available, and we will provide it. And as noted, based on what the presentation was given today, we did have these, this, these properties earlier, and the property map was submitted with the original bill that was passed into law, and I will go ahead and provide that copy for our members here.
Well, right now, the properties in question are the ones in Bill 401, 2, and 3.
401, 402, and 403.
Yeah, that, and the Dos Amontes, and just for the benefit of the body, to be able to see that on the map.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and recess till Friday morning at 10. We will recess till 9:30 on a compromise. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. This legislature is in recess.